Could everyone please be seated so we can begin? I call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane, Councilmember Barry, Councilmember Clay, Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Snipper, Councilmember Williams.
Councilmembers Austin Lane and Clay will not be joining us this evening. I believe both of them are out of town. Are there any council comments or announcements? I'd like to start off with a couple of brief announcements. One is that the city issued a press advisory at the end of last week which covers the city's sanctuary law policy. This includes both the legal memorandum that the city council discussed in closed session last Monday as well as a statement of current city policy. And I believe that there are some copies of that advisory over on the side if anybody would like to take a look at them. We will be having an open session discussion to follow up on that at some point after the council recess. The next thing I just wanted to mention is that on Thursday Chief Akouchi and I were part of a press conference that was called by the Montgomery County State's Attorney to discuss anti-gang activities. And there were two points that were made at the press conference, both of which I very strongly agree with. One is that the county is going to take a very hard line on anti-gang issues. And the police chief is working, there's a member of our police department, working on a task force with people from across the county. But the other point that was made very strongly is that the most effective way to reduce gang activity is to prevent it. And the city has been very supportive of gang prevention activities. We actually have within the city of Tacoma Park a county-funded youth opportunity center which is designed to provide support for young people at risk of joining gangs and to help them into constructive activities. That is the best way to reduce gang activity. Once people get into gangs, you do have to use law enforcement techniques, but it's much more difficult and the success rate is not as high at that point. So prevention is really the way to go. The state's attorney and Montgomery County Executive also made the point that this was not going to become an effort to profile individuals based on their ethnic group, that this was going to be directed at activities, illegal activities, and at youth at risk. And that this was an opportunity to go after people who committed illegal acts, not to profile any particular group, and that I would agree with also. And so those are a couple of things that are somewhat related that the council covered in the last week. Are there any other announcements?
Yes, Mayor, on that point related to it, August 7th, which is Tuesday night, will be the Tacoma Langley Crossroads National Night Out 2007. This is brought to you by our very excellent SeaSafe program which works in the crossroad area. It starts at 6 o'clock, music, free rapples, children's games, safety information, and ice cream with a candlelight vigil starting at 8:45. Join us to make our community safer. Everybody is invited. And then, Mayor and colleagues, following on my comments last week about the continuing problem of litter and blight on our side of town, I would like, over the next couple of weeks, to do a very quick question and answer, to answer questions and concerns that people may have in the community who are watching on television. The question tonight, "Can I leave empty beer bottles in an upright position on my front yard?" Most of the other bottles I've seen are tipped over. Answer, no, you may not. You may not leave trash, litter, debris. It's not allowed in the front yard, the sidewalk, or near the curb. And if we see that you have done that, upright or turned over, the city will leave a little pamphlet like this, it's called a courtesy notice, that will be placed on your door. And it will remind you of the law. It covers 15 specific areas of infraction, that is to prevent blight. And then there's a 16th category for "other," which I guess we'll tell you about once we've seen it and noticed that it's part of blight. So tune in next week for another question and answer, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. That's a hard act to follow. I would like to let people know that on this side of town that there will be a national night out celebration at 7777 Maple Avenue at the same time as on August 6th, 6 o'clock in the evening. And then I also wanted, Mayor Porter, to see if maybe we could, in light of the discussion you were having about the importance of reaching out to the young people to divert them from gangs, if maybe the council could have a council discussion of the Recreation Department and clarification of the council's desires and policy on what we would like to see the Recreation Department doing.
I am already planning to do that. That will be in the fall. I haven't scheduled it yet because there needs to be some discussion with the Rec. Director, but that is on the list of things that I have intended to schedule for the fall.
Great, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to let people know that I've been out of the country for 10 days, just returned to Tacoma Park at 4 o'clock today, have not looked at any voicemail, listened to any voicemail, looked at any email, I haven't had access to news of any kind, it's been wonderful.
And you have a great game.
All right. We will go on to consider the minutes. We have before us the minutes of May 21st and June 4th. Someone want to move adoption of the minutes?
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. The minutes are adopted. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time for comments on items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to discuss the impeachment resolution, that is an agenda item and we will take that up at a later point. But this would be the time for comments on items that are not on our agenda or items that are on our work session agenda, which we only have one item, which is the planning for the city election. So if you have any items that you'd like to bring before the council, other than the ones that are on our regular meeting agenda, this would be the time to come forward. I would ask if, when you do so, if you could identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Anyone have any comments? Yeah. And then go right up to the podium.
My name is Ababa Fakade. I'm here on behalf of the Ethiopian community in Tacoma, the city of Tacoma Park. As you all remember or know, about a year ago, we came to you to ask you to support us, adopt a bill that needs to be submitted to the Congress. And that was HR 5680 at that time, it's now HR 2003, which is a bill for implementing democratic rights and civil rights, human rights in Ethiopia, and also the release of political prisoners in our country. And we're here today as a result of your support and as a result of the European Union and the Congress and the people of Ethiopia who struggled for the release of the political prisoners. Some of our political prisoners have been released this past Friday, 38 of them. So we're here to thank you for that. However, we would like also to inform our community here that your support is still needed because we still have thousands and thousands of political prisoners in the country, journalists, students, and that's going on now. So we do believe that if we work together and we do see change, and we really appreciate once again your support, and we look forward to work with you and to gain your support again in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
And especially, we have a special thanks to Councilman Siemens. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for letting us know that I had promised that I would write another letter in support, and if you think I still need to do that, I would be happy to still do that.
Thank you, yes, we do need it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue in Ward 1. The council does not take public comment on agenda items, resolutions, that is, until after the council has discussed them. So I won't comment on an item now, which is the first reading of the ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding rent stabilization. I asked the council to table this resolution and defer it to a meeting when all council members are present. I noticed the absence of councilmembers Austin Lane and Clay, who I both know, I know both have a keen interest in this subject, which is a very important subject for Tacoma Park, for the character of the city, economic, racial diversity, and all kinds of questions. I know they also have an opinion that might differ from those opinions of other members of the council. I also note that Councilmember Williams has been away for a while and presumably has not prepared for an in-depth discussion of the ordinance. Therefore, I ask the council to defer first reading consideration of the rent stabilization ordinance. It's too important to be voted on, to be discussed and voted on with a partial council presence, it's just simply too important.
Thank you. As you know, there has been a lot of discussion of rent stabilization. This is not the only this evening with the discussions taking place.
My name is Mark Hessel. I'd also like to discuss the rent control.
Again, if you're going to discuss the content of it, it would be appropriate to wait until that, that the rent stabilization ordinance comes up. Mr. Grimes was talking about the timing of it, as I understand, and I think for that reason he wanted to discuss before it came up.
I'll discuss such things later. I think it also should be put off, and I have some additional considerations for the council to consider.
Okay. Anyone else for items that are not on a regular meeting agenda, which includes both the impeachment petition and rent stabilization? All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to the city manager's update.
Just a few items this evening. I wanted to share with the council that a subcontractor of James Effnot Construction was on site last week, as I had mentioned, last Monday. They did complete the stormwater work that has obviously been pending for some time, and I have received a certification from the Civil Engineer for the project indicating that he has reviewed that work and finds it to be in conformance with the construction documents. So it looks like we have one piece of Phase 1 finally done. Also wanted to just respond to some inquiries I've received from the community about the work that was done by S.H.A. on Philadelphia Avenue. There was a lot of concern expressed about the fact that the street was torn up with very little notice to the city, and also that it was paved at night with no notice to the city. I will be following up with the appropriate officials at S.H.A. to make sure that they are aware of our concerns and to ask for their cooperation for any future work done in the city, that at least we could work together to provide sufficient notification to our residents. A number of residents have contacted me to inquire when this crosswalks would be reinstalled. We don't have a specific time. It is my understanding that should be done this week, and in accordance with their contract, that work would also be done on a nighttime schedule, though hopefully much quieter than the paving work was. For everyone's benefit, the contract that S.H.A. signed with that contractor provided that no work could begin before 9 o'clock in the evening. So once they entered into that contract, there's really not a lot the city could do in terms of any additional work to change the timeline. So we will be working, though, going forward in the future to make sure we don't have a similar situation if at all possible.
Can we work with S.H.A. to see if we can get them to do crosswalks that are that bright yellow reflective material like we've done on our own streets?
Yeah, we did actually approach them about that, Mayor, because you had raised that issue, and our Public Works Director did speak to S.H.A. about that. Given that they already have a contract for this work, it's not something that can be done without some further review by S.H.A. internally, and that may take some time. So they are going to go ahead and proceed with installing the crosswalks in the normal painted fashion at this time, but they were very interested in having further discussions with the city about any other work that would be done in the future.
Can installations of those crosswalks happen at a time when the roadway has not been freshly paved? In other words, are we waiting for another 30 or 40 years if we don't do it now?
I don't believe so, but I'll double check that with the Public Works Director.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? All right. We will then move on to the regular meeting agenda. The first item on the agenda is a resolution petitioning for the impeachment of President George Bush and Vice President Richard Cheney. I know there's a number of people here who have very strong feelings about this. I would like to do this in an efficient manner, so I would ask if you would not applaud every speaker, that we might, we could very well be here all night. So I understand that there's a lot of people who want to speak. I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. In order to do that, we will restrict everybody's comments to three minutes so that the folks, everybody who wants to speak will be able to do that before you, you know, have to go home and put your kids to bed. And so I would also ask if we can hold any applause or other support or lack of support for speakers so we can move through this efficiently. I don't know if anybody on the council wants to say anything preliminarily, I'll turn to the person who wants to introduce this, but I just wanted to start off by saying that this is an effort which has come to the council through the concern of a lot of people in the community. And I have had people come to me to speak to me about this issue, and I have talked to them about, you know, other folks in the community that they were working with, and I just want to congratulate the organizers of this effort because you've done an extremely good job of reaching out to the community and talking to a large number of people. And I do feel very confident that the council is considering this issue this evening, having gotten a very good sense of the concerns within the community. So I do want to thank the people who started getting this information out and did such a good job of it. Uben, did you want to say anything? And do you want to introduce the resolution?
Yeah, I do want to. First, I also want to say that I'm very glad to see so many people here. It's always a pleasure. Sometimes we've had discussions in which the public is not present, and they can be very important discussions, quite frankly, having to do with things in the city. So I'm very glad to see you all here, and I hope you will consider coming back for the riveting, as our cassette reporter calls it, budget discussions. I also want to say that Tacoma Park has passed many resolutions over the years, and I have been proud of most of them. And to me, this seems like another in a long line of progressive things that Tacoma Park has done and I hope will continue to do in the future. I'm very glad to sponsor this resolution, and I also want to thank the organizers for their tremendous effort in educating the public, in organizing people to come, in getting signs out for people. It's a very impressive effort. And while I do recognize that Tacoma Park passing this resolution is a symbolic act, I believe these kinds of things are important. I do think they send a message. We had a presentation or some comments earlier this evening about Ethiopian prisoners, and as Councilmember Siemens said, he doesn't believe that the city's action influenced Ethiopia to release the political prisoners, but it does encourage other people to work hard in these efforts. And so I'm perfectly, I'm very happy to support the impeachment resolution for that basis if nothing else. And finally, I want to say that I personally am, as appalled as many of you are, about the actions of Bush and Cheney, and so I am delighted that the city is taking this action and pleased to be the sponsor of it. Thank you.
Does anyone want to second the resolution?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Does any member of the council want to make a statement? Yes, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution. I would suggest adding two additional resolve clauses. The first one to say, be it further resolved, that the city clerk will draft a letter for the city council's signature urging our elected members of the Montgomery County Council, the Montgomery County Executive, and the Maryland Legislature, and the governor to consider and adopt similar resolutions. And the second, and the second addition I would like to see, and do you want this as a separate amendment, Mayor Porter?
No, why don't you say what it is first?
Okay. Be it further resolved that the city council encourages all residents to write a letter to Representative Christopher Van Hollen, Senator Barbara McCullogh, and Senator Benjamin Cardin, petitioning them to support immediate institution of impeachment proceedings against George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney.
It sounds to me like those are in the spirit of the original resolution, if the mover thinks that they are, then we can just, if there's no objection from the rest of the council, I would just say that those are in the spirit of the original one. All right. Any other comments? All right, it is now open for public comments. What I would ask you to do is to, if people can come up to the podium, and I think the most efficient way to do it is to have people sort of line up behind the podium. And again, I would ask everybody to do two things. One is to identify yourself, and the second is, in order to enable everyone to speak, we are going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And there's a little light on the podium which will tell you when your three minutes are up, and I will also remind you. So again, if you can identify yourself first, and if you can keep your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate it. I'm sorry, Terry, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Mayor Porter, I had a comment from Pat Lovelace.
Okay, did you want to add that at the beginning?
One of my good statements, and I would like to add that to the record. He said, "I fully support the resolution to impeach Bush and Cheney. I'm glad to see that Tacoma Park is standing up in the spirit of activism. Activism is what this country really needs. At this time, I'm glad to see Tacoma Park is taking the lead in making these people accountable for their actions. Tacoma Park will not be walked on by a couple of hoodlums. It's time to bring out the rotten peach award and impeach George Bush and Richard Cheney." I'm sorry, I'm not at the meeting tonight, and I, because I'm in Massachusetts with my family. And that's the gentleman that's here for most meetings. At the beginning of the meeting, he usually gets up and makes a statement. He was very disappointed not to be able to be here tonight and wanted me to pass that message along. Thank you.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
Well, my name's Thomas Nefew. I live on Birch Avenue, and I'm here to support the impeachment resolution sponsored by Councilman Ruth and Snipper. Tonight, it seems like momentum is building for impeachment. We've heard that the Judiciary Committee Chair, John Conyers, is looking for just three more representatives to endorse an impeachment resolution put forward by Kucinich, House Resolution 333, and he'll begin impeachment hearings if he gets those three endorsements, co-sponsorships locally. The response to this idea is overwhelmingly positive when we petition or go door to door. And on July 4th, we got a lot of support, including from Representative Chris Van Hollen, 202-225-5341, who told parade watchers the Libby commutation was going to make him think about impeachment too. But there have been questions that deserve answers, including fundamentally, why bother with this? What good will this council resolution do? And as I've said before, I think the short answer to why bother is summed up by the question back, what if we don't even bother? Among the terrible precedents this administration has set are the sin and crime of torture, fraudulent case for war, abrogation of habeas corpus, warrantless surveillance and direct defiance of specific law, a king-like disregard and contempt for other laws, properly passed and signed, and a refusal to enforce them. Each of these are grounds enough for impeachment, and new ones taunt us each day, Libby's commutation, the US Attorney scandal, executive orders threatening to dispossess Iraq war opponents, refusal to honor subpoenas or enforced contempt citations. Together, they add up to an administration that has to be opposed, whose very policy is to flout the Constitution and make it a dead letter instead of a living guardian of our liberties and the rule of law. But also, unless we act now, the next administration like this one can take its approach as a consensus starting point instead of a shame on this country and a reproach to its institutions. So that's where we come in. The first three words of the Constitution are, "We, the people, we ordain and establish the Constitution, we are responsible for it, we here in this room too, and you are elected leaders too." While Congress has hesitated discussing this, you have not, and you have my deep gratitude for that. Tonight, we're proving that ordinary citizens and local elected leaders care deeply about their Constitution and the rule of law. I hope we'll do more and send a clear message to Congress and to our own great representative, Chris Van Hollen, that they must take up the impeachment of a president and vice president who deserve it more than anyone else in the history of this country. So thank you all very much for considering this resolution and for the opportunity to speak for it, and to all of you who vote for it. I'm sure you'll have many other successes, but this is the finest thing you'll ever do.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Moscatello, and I live on Cockrell Avenue, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Snipper and the rest of the members of the council and the mayor for putting this resolution on the agenda. and the mayor for putting this resolution on the agenda. And I'd like to talk a little bit about my experience in gathering names, giving out flyers, getting people to sign petitions. One of the things that struck me as really sad and alarming is the number of people who are afraid to sign, who are afraid to put their name down. We had members of the postal service who were afraid to sign. And a couple months ago, I went up to Brooklyn, New York, to attend the funeral of my Uncle Tony, who grew up in Italy during Mussolini's reign. And he came over here to get away from tyranny in Italy, I said to my grandmother. And when I told my cousin what I was doing, the first thing she said was, "Be careful, be careful." And that just makes me really sad, that the daughter of this man who came over here to get away from a tyrant in a foreign country now feels afraid for me to speak out. And recently, just this past week, if you can look on the White House's webpage, they've issued an executive order that talks about seizing property of people here in this country who are suspected of destabilizing the situation in Iraq. And now we've learned that, you know, the language is very vague, and a lot of people are really worried. And we've also learned that Americans have been taken into prisons, into custody for several years without being tried, and that the government can now open your mail, they can wiretap you. And the message that we've been getting from our president and our government is, "We are watching you. We are watching you." And I just want to commend everybody here tonight who is going to be on TV, on the internet, and many of us are giving our names, that we are saying, "We are watching you." And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jay Levy. I live at 7431 Baltimore Avenue and is a 32-year resident at Tacoma Park. I'd like to congratulate the city council for taking this action tonight. I don't come up here to support the resolution because we are in an immoral, illegal, and senseless war. I don't come before the council to support the resolution because so far, it has cost the taxpayers of Tacoma Park $25 million and the Montgomery County taxpayers $2 billion. I come before the council because America is under threat. It's a threat to our Constitution from Mr. Bush and Mr. Cheney. Now, you've already heard some of the shredding of the Constitution actions, the habeas corpus, the torture. I won't go into that. What I will go into is my fear in the future. Now, Tacoma Park has always been against guns. If we let these two men get away with what they've gotten away with so far, we will be leaving loaded guns in the White House, in the Oval Office, for the next people to come in. And if it's the wrong kind of people, they could use those guns, all the weapons that Bush and Cheney are using to shred the Constitution. They could use them to go even further, and we must stop them now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tavabwa Safa. I live on 777 Maple Avenue. I'm a member of Tacoma Park Community Action Group. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Tacoma Park and the council and the mayor for passing the resolution in support of the struggle of the Ethiopian people, which was remarkable, and the hearts of Ethiopians living. It's made a big remark because it says solidarity to humanity, solidarity to human rights, peace, and development of the world. So I disagree with you, Councilmember Snapper. It's not a symbolical statement. It's a very fundamental statement. Unless we speak, the silence is agreeing what's so disgusting and a global label. I'd like to share a personal story. I've said this before. Growing up in the city of Addis, I've heard, this is just remarkable, I remembered it about two, three months ago, I heard the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, UC Berkeley, Madison, Wisconsin, were the city of people, progressive people who are concerned. It's amazing. Here I am, being an active resident of Tacoma Park. I like that tradition. I want another child somewhere else to grow up, knowing in America, at the time of Bush and Cheney madness, there are people who care. There are people who stand and speak the truth. So in that fundamental tradition, and I want my child to grow. In fact, before this, every time I drove in the neighborhood of Tacoma Park, seeing the sign gave me a daily encouragement. I live in the right and the right community, especially living here as an immigrant. It's very, very, very important because immigrants cannot speak what they think and what they feel unless they see the brave citizens stand out first. So in that regard, it's a wonderful tradition, and I'm very, very pleased to be part of it, and I'd like to see this tradition continue. So I'm very, very impressed with this impeachment on that level. And the other one is, the war is bad for everyone. It's bad for the Middle East, it's bad the world peace. Well, I mean, in every level, I mean, it's a gross human, in fact, I can't even think of a word to describe because it just began. The consequences yet to come, and we have to stand together and make this strong statement and stand hand in hand with the people of the world who are disgusted by the war. Thank you very much, and I encourage you to continue the tradition.
Thank you.
My name's Patty LeBlanc. I'm a retired Tacoma Park elementary school teacher. I live on Hilton Avenue. And till I saw the Bill Moyers program on impeachment, I really thought this whole impeachment business was, well, it wasn't going to go anywhere, and it wasn't, I wasn't sure it really was useful. That program made me realize that I had not been a responsible citizen, and that by saying, "Oh, I don't think it's going to waste time, and it's not good," I was putting my country in danger, and that the real people I'm going to direct my attention to are the people in Congress, and that as a citizen, I must demand that they start impeachment proceedings. That is, our country is in danger by permitting the kind of behavior that has been going on, that not only right now, it's obviously in danger, but I don't really care whoever is next in the White House. That kind of power is much too seductive. It is dangerous. And one of the people on Bill Moyers' show said, "Impeachment is an essential instrument of the American democratic system." And I really feel we are in a crisis in this country, and I am looking to the people in Congress to hear me and everyone here and know that it is time for them to put our country back the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hank Prensky, 7921 Sligo Creek Parkway. I've lived in Tacoma Park 21 years. I had the honor of sitting up there and being a member of the city council for four of them. I want to warn the council, you're about to step into some dangerous territory. It's getting to be August, which is time for the annual humiliation of Tacoma Park by The Washington Post. So there will be an article, I'm sure, tomorrow morning in the Style section about those wacky hippies and Birkenstock-wearing malcontents in Tacoma Park. But don't listen. It's going to be just their summer problem. On July 4th, I stood and enjoyed the Independence Day Parade. And when Chris Van Hollen came by, I yelled at him very loud for at least 200 people to hear, "Hey, Chris, we want you to sponsor, co-sponsor the impeachment resolution." And a lot of people cheered. And Chris came over to talk to me, and he said, you know, "It's really a tough kind of sell. It's a hard deal." But given this last, last act by the Bush administration in pardoning or commuting Scouperlittie's sentence, he said, "I'm going to seriously think about it." Today, I got an email from True Majority, a progressive patriotic organization, that says, "We've reached the impeachment moment for Vice President Dick Cheney. Representative John Conyers, chairman of the House Judiciary Committee, says that if just three more representatives come out in support of impeaching the vice president, he will begin the impeachment proceedings." There are, as of today, 14 members of Congress have co-sponsored Dennis Kucinich's resolution to impeach Dick Cheney. One of them is Tom Davis, our nearby neighbor in Northern Virginia. Another is Al Nguyen, our former member of Congress. It's time for Chris Van Hollen to step forward and become one of those three. Call 202-225-5341 and tell him, the way I did this morning. And if he really doesn't like the idea, I'd like to present this question to him publicly here. How many more representatives have to sign, Chris, before you feel safe enough, comfortable enough with your leadership position in the Democratic Party apparatus to co-sponsor that resolution? Because if it's 27, we'll know when to call you. If it's 153, we'll know when to call you. But tell us, Chris, how many other people have to do this before you can do it? This is a really important stand to take against the rogue regime of George Bush and Dick Cheney. One of the things this will do is help increase the real estate values here in Tacoma Park. I'm a Realtor here. I constantly am told by clients how they want to live in a progressive community. They want to live in a small town where people have a say about what goes on, and they want to live in Tacoma Park because of that eloquent man two people ahead of me said, "People know about us. People care about this."
Can you wrap up, Hank?
My time is up. I've brought a peach to remind everybody that they're in season, they're delicious, and we want to impeach, 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 impeach.
By the way, it's Maran, not Davis in Virginia. Jim Maran.
I'm sorry.
The correction is it's Jim Maran, not Tom Davis, who signed on.
Hi, my name is David Kirschbaum. I live at 7600 Maple Avenue. And I think that there are actual grounds for impeachment with Bush's domestic wiretap program, which actually violates the law when he didn't open that program up to judicial review, in fact, at one point refused to. But beyond that, I think that George Bush and Cheney are real threats to our democracy with all the different examples of how they are trying to undo the balance of power, as well as the separation of church and state, as well as civil rights. And these are the basic pillars that support our democracy. And there's many examples. For example, did you know that they're supporting the sale of a book on creationism in the national parks, specifically Grand Canyon National Park, and many other examples like that? In violation of civil rights, there's not only the Patriot Act, but the efforts of the Bush administration to undo the laws protecting government whistleblowers. And there's many other examples. Another important example is many surveys of government scientists in the NOAA, the Fish and Wildlife Services, the Bureau of Land Management, and the EPA would show that a significant number of those scientists are under pressure to change their scientific findings in order to fit Bush's policies. And finally, to me, the most, and, well, the thing about it is, is that this is not just a war on our democracy, but it's a war on intelligence, on knowledge, on communication of facts, on expertise. And probably the most striking example of this to me is the fact that you know that the Bush administration put in their budget to close the EPA libraries so the scientists and the public cannot protect the environment. They put it in the budget, which is open to congressional review. But, you know, they didn't wait for that. They are now closing the libraries right now, even without giving the Congress a chance to do anything about it. So not only is this another example of hurting the balance of powers, and not only is this another example, but it's an important example of the war on knowledge. And we need to write our congressmen to support them stopping the closure of the EPA libraries. And actually, there's a lot of congressmen trying to stop it right now, but the Bush administration has continued with that. And I think that the thing is, what this shows is that the Bush administration has like an arrogance toward the people and toward scientific fact. They don't care about either. They just want to do what they want to do when they want to do it. And they also include, of course, in this their friends in big business. So this is the biggest danger of the Bush administration. They're acting like two-year-olds or like spoiled rich kids, which is actually what Bush is. So we need to really stop this guy, these guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sue Wheaton. I live on Spruce Avenue. I've been in Tacoma Park for 25 years, and I just want to say thank you again, and also say I agree. I mean, I think we all know that these people have got to be stopped. We can't wait the 20 months for a new government. We've got to stop them. They're very dangerous. I just want to take this occasion to announce that next week, next Tuesday night, we are having a very distinguished person speak here in Tacoma Park for impeachment. And he's also, I'm also active in the DC 9/11 Truth Committee, studying 9/11 and all the things that were not investigated in the 9/11 explanation committee that Congress set up. But there has not been a true investigation of the greatest crime in United States history. Many things are known now. Dr. Bob Bowman is speaking next Tuesday night on his Take Back America tour. This man flew 101 combat missions in Vietnam. He is a, he's a lieutenant colonel in the United States Air Force, retired. He was also director of the Star Wars programs under the Carter and Ford administrations, and later he named the successor program, Star Wars, derisively. He ran for Congress in the conservative Florida 15th District as a Democrat and garnered over 40% of the vote on a 9/11 truth platform, among other things. He's incorporating all of this. He's on a nationwide tour. This is his exclusive appearance here in the Washington area, and we'll be honored to have him here. I will be so proud to announce that Tacoma Park has just passed this resolution, which I hope we will, we will. And so I just want everybody to see, to try to come and hear Dr. Bowman and welcome him to Tacoma Park. When I called Van Hollen's office this morning about this Kucinich Resolution 333, I said you all were voting on this tonight, and they weren't aware of it. They were very interested in that. So, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Goulden, and it's been a while since I've been here. I don't come down as much as I did when I was the editor of the City Newsletter. It's good to see you all again. I am down here to speak in favor of the pro-impeachment resolution. And I just thought, because I can see not everyone is going to, who's here for this issue, is going to get up and speak. I'm just going to ask, if you would, for a show of hands for those people who are here to support the impeachment resolution. Raise your hand, please. Okay, that's a, that's a great turnout. Thank you. Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the politics and the psychology of this issue because this is both a political issue and in a way, a legal issue. Impeachment is like an indictment. And I think that if we take a look at the situation of the Bush-Cheney administration today and the situation of Richard Nixon back in 1974, when Richard Nixon was about to be impeached, and then he resigned on the eve of what was certain to be an impeachment situation for him, I think you'll see that there are actually some very interesting parallels in that. I don't have time to go into it, but as you may remember, those of you who are old enough, I think some of you are, that Richard Nixon was impeached basically for two kinds of crimes. One was his crimes abroad in the war in Cambodia and Vietnam, and the other was internal spying. You'll remember the Daniel Ellsberg break-in and the plumbers operation. In a way, what we have here today is really comparable, that we have a combination of crimes abroad, a war that makes no sense and which is based on lies, and a program of spying on American citizens, which really dwarfs anything that Nixon and his plumbers might have done. So I think if you take a look at it just on the merits, as if you were people on a grand jury, I think that this measure really has some merit to it. And I ask you to sort of stand up and to be bold in this. One of my favorite poems of the 20th century, "The Second Coming" by William Butler Yeats, he had these well-known lines. He was speaking at the time of the rise of fascism and impending World War II. And he said, "The best lack all conviction, while the worst are full of passionate intensity." And too often in the last 20 years in the United States, the extreme right has been full of passionate intensity, while the decent people and the progressive people have held back. back and have been unwilling to take a forthright stand. So I ask you to do that today and to push forward the dialogue on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Porter, members of the council. My name is Anita Burka. I live at 6725 Poplar Avenue. Our federal constitution, written in 1789, in many ways embodies our national character, what we commonly understand to be American. Our belief that all citizens are equal under the law and no one is above the law, that we have a right to be secure in our persons and property without fear of government intrusion. For over 200 years, that constitution in our country has stood as a beacon of democracy to the world. However, in the past six and a half years, the administration of George Bush and Dick Cheney have sought at every turn to deny, undermine, and rewrite our common understanding of what it means to be an American. We are now a country of torture and secret detentions. Our government spies on us, its own citizens. Our justice system has been perverted to keep Republicans in office and persecute Democrats. Our president claims far-reaching powers not subject to congressional oversight or subpoena. He pardons his underlings to cover up his own wrongdoings, and he takes the country to war based on lies. This is not the America that I learned about in school. This is not the America I served as a Peace Corps volunteer. A system is only as good as the people executing it. And if Congress will not stand up as a co-equal branch of government to act as a check and bounds on this executive branch's lawlessness, corruption, and assumption of monarchical powers, the people must rise up and demand that Congress do its job. I want to thank the council for bringing this resolution to impeach the president and vice president to a vote. It's more than Congress has done so far. Thank you.
My name is Felicia, and I hope it's okay for me to be here. I live in downtown Silver Spring, just over the border. And I agree with what everybody's been saying, and I thank you for, Councilmember Seaman, for your recommendation to encourage Montgomery County to get in on this. I think that's great, and I'll make this as short as I can. I've been listening and observing and watching all this stuff about the impeachment of Vice President Cheney and of Bush. I've been listening for a couple of years now, and I was talking to some of my neighbors, and I was saying, "This reminds me so much of what I used to hear my parents when they talked about what it was like growing up in 1920s Germany." And of course, then in the 1930s, my mother, a musician, and my father, a stonecutter, they ended up here. So I agree with Councilmember Snipper's impeachment resolution and all the grounds that he gives, and I don't want to see this country turning into 1920s Germany, which then became 1930s and 40s Germany. And the mindset and everything that went along with all that, that didn't happen overnight. There's a book by Ziegfried Lenz, Das Deutsche Unterricht, The German Lesson, which can give also some insight on what life was like back then in that country. Not long ago, I think it was House Speaker Pelosi who said something about Congressman Kucinich's Articles of Impeachment. She said something like, maybe I have this not exact, but "The Constitution is worth fighting for if you can win," something like that. Well, all I can say is that our Constitution is worth fighting for to make it win and know if about it. I'm tired of these lies. I'm tired of having our civil liberties eroded. I'm tired of our environment and our economy being destroyed bit by bit. I'm tired of World War III being practically initiated by these, I don't know, this is going to sound a little strong, but I think of the phrase dictator wannabes in our White House. And I think that the city of Tacoma Park, by adopting Councilmember Snipper's resolution, would join the other municipalities around the country in setting an example to our Congress, our United States Congress. Just as the city of Tacoma Park should adopt Councilman Snipper's resolution, so should the Congress of the United States sponsor Congressman Kucinich's House Resolution 333, which is Articles of Impeachment against Dick Cheney. You get Cheney first. Thus showing that they, along with people of Tacoma Park and by extension, people of the United States of America, will no longer tolerate a White House that betrays national and global security, breaches the Geneva and related conventions, erodes our civil liberties, and flouts the United States Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Philip Wheaton. I'm an Episcopal priest. We live at 7211 Spruce Avenue. I've lived here for 25 years. I was in charge of the sanctuary movement in the 1980s. I'm a Latin American historian, and I want to bring to mind, in the spirit of the person who just preceded me, one fact and a second fact that I think are extremely important to where we are at our particular moment in history. In 1922, at the Geopolitical Institute in Munich, Germany, they drew up a thing called the National Security State Doctrine, in conjunction with the capitalists in Germany and many other right-wingers. And they are the persons who found a painter from Austria to head up the movement that they put into movement, into operation between 1922 and 1930. That man's name was Adolf Hitler. What I want to emphasize to us today is that Adolf Hitler, who is so hated by so many people, was not the key person that the German people had to go after, but rather these other people who put him into power. In 1948, in this country, we enacted the National Security State Doctrine and brought into law, including the National Security Council and national security legislation, which is a fascist document and which no one objected to in Congress. They let it pass. And that National Security State Doctrine rules, laws, have been passed by many presidents of the United States down through our history. So we are looking not simply at a certain bad person now, but the erosion of our democracy and the silence of our Congress over a long period of time. If you look at Lyndon Johnson, he passed a National Security State Doctrine, which countermanded the plan of President Kennedy to get us out of the war in Vietnam, saying in that statement that if the Pentagon put him into power, he would give them their war, meaning that he would increase the troops in the war in Vietnam at that time. Therefore, I think it's very important for us to understand that it is very, very late in this game, that we have committed many, many crimes, and we have not only the Constitution in our governmental structure, but we have this National Security State Doctrine, which is used by these people to justify anything they want to do. And I would like to just close by saying, if anyone thinks that if you remove Bush from power, you will have done anything to change the environment that we are all so concerned about, and therefore, the statement that first went up on these green cards was to impeach him, meaning Bush. And that was changed precisely because people began to understand that we have to impeach our Vice President Cheney and all of the people who are behind this doctrine and that understand that Bush is simply the front man for these people. So we're talking about a very deeply systemic process of the erosion of our democracy, and it is time that we do this, or we're going to lose it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Oh, there you go.
There you go, yeah.
Hi. I'm not actually from Tacoma Park, but unfortunately, I live in DC, so I don't have any representation.
Okay. We're glad to have you.
So hopefully you'll help your neighbors out a little bit. But one thing that I want to address is...
Can you give us your name?
Oh, Emma Ruder.
Okay, thank you.
One thing is that I think we're all pretty much aware of the crimes that this administration has performed, most emphatically Dick Cheney. But I've been organizing in Congress for the past year and a half or so, and I'm very aware of how impotent these congressmen are, very, very impotent. And what they refuse to look at is the future threat that keeping especially Dick Cheney in office poses to not only America, but globally. We have absolutely destroyed our reputation internationally. Internationally, people are yearning, yearning for the US to return to the very American policies that, you know, our tradition represents, most immediately through someone like FDR, who defeated fascism with a big, big loving fist, right? But this immediate period ahead of us, August, is probably the most dangerous thing that the United States has faced in a long time. Because if you guys are aware, both world wars, the first and the second, were all started in August. One is because Congress is out of session. They take a nice vacation in the summer from governing the country, and so you don't have a powerful oversight to stop something like that. And we know how relentless these guys are, especially Cheney. So if we don't get Congress to move immediately on impeaching Cheney first and then Bush as an added delicacy, you know, then the threat that the United States is faced with could be absolutely irreversible. That's really all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to address you this evening on the subject of the impeachment resolution. I'm Seth Grimes, Willow Avenue. Bob Golden very graphically and simply showed the sense of the people in this room by asking them to raise their hands in support of the resolution. There are other folks in this room, Tom's nephew and Mari, Nina, my neighbor, Josh, who are very graphically, by holding the American flag, showing what's motivating all of us in Tacoma Park to support this resolution. You know as well as I do, you don't have to live here very long to know, that Tacoma Park overwhelmingly supports this resolution. It should therefore be a no-brainer for passage, which is sadly appropriate, given the subject matter of the resolution. The resolution is more than symbolic. It has lent weight by Congress's having invited local governments to enter their views into the congressional record. Therefore, it is your invitation and responsibility to do so. So thank you to the community organizers who brought us to this point. Thank you for the council who are considering, and I'm confident, and we're all confident, we'll pass this resolution, for taking these steps to send a very bold and needed signal to the Congress that they should undertake impeachment proceedings, and to the people of the United States that it's time to act to end the tenure of the Bush-Cheney administration.
Dan Robinson. I live on Grant Avenue. I moved here in 1985, and my wife and I bought a house just up the street, and we had never really heard of Tacoma Park. Didn't know where we were moving or what the history was, and it didn't take long. Sammy Abbott was still mayor. It didn't take long to realize that something was going on here. And the longer I stayed, the more I realized what important things were going on here. And I'm from a family, I moved around a lot as a kid. And my mom came to this country from France when she was 18 at the beginning of World War II. So she was on the run and had to find her place and had enough trouble finding her place, that we moved around a lot. And my father was similar, he was an American all the way, but had trouble sort of settling. So when I moved here and I started to, I let my roots grow. I let my roots grow into the ground, and the deeper they got, the more I wanted to stay and the more I wanted to be involved, and the prouder I've been of all the things that we in Tacoma Park do. And that's really all I want to say, is I'm proud of us and I'm proud of you.
Was there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I would like to, but I need a camera.
Is there any... Maybe you could just... There you go.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bailey on Sherman Avenue, and I've been here several times in the past few months. I wasn't going to say anything again tonight about impeachment, except for I heard Hank Kaprensky mention The Washington Post. I'm among many things, I wear many hats. I'm also an independent filmmaker, web designer, I did our website. And being an independent filmmaker and producer, I thought, yeah, I'm bringing my camera tonight because who knows who's going to show up? I mean, over 50% of the American population is, you know, for ending the war in Iraq and for impeaching Bush and Cheney. And no thanks to the media, sorry, no thanks to the media, it's because we are using our critical thinking and our awareness of what's going on. We know it's wrong, we feel it's wrong. And yes, the media is starting to pay attention a little bit. I know there's some media here tonight, but just in case they weren't, I've got my camera right over there, because we will put our own photos up, we'll write our own articles, we will put our own websites and blogs up, and we will talk to our neighbors and our friends and our family, and tell the world ourselves that we are not okay with what's going on, and we will make this change happen. And hopefully, the media will cover it, but if they don't, we've got a backup plan. And I encourage everyone to look at independent media, support independent media. And I'm making a film, if people want to be on camera for a second saying why they're here tonight. I'm going to be outside with my camera, and already several people have already done this. It's going to be great. We'll put it on the internet, and it will encourage other people around the country to also do the same. So, thank you, and...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak to this resolution?
Just as a follow-up to that, I'd encourage anyone to write letters to the Tacoma Voice or your statements, send your statements as letters, and we'll certainly put the minutes, get the word out. Thank you.
And that was Julie Wyatt who said that.
Julie Wyatt, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Abbott Young. I live on Holly Avenue, and I'm here actually in memory of my father, Sam Abbott. And I want to thank you for this resolution. I want to thank you for the up and down vote, just looking at the issue. Especially want to thank you for the up vote. And I want to say that it's very important that we send a message, as one of 80-plus communities in America, to the world, to let the people of the world, especially the Middle East, know that not every American goes along with the abuses of power and the support of torture and these horrendous things that they're doing in the name of freedom and democracy. So thank you for bringing this to the community. Thank you for bringing it to the Congress and the state, and thank you for bringing it to the regular people of the world who are looking to the American people for some sanity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Peter Suruncioni, also from Burchett. I have had the pleasure to live in Tacoma Park my entire short life of 23 years, and I would like to think that I know something of what Tacoma Park is. And to me, I am so extremely proud to look around and see this tonight and say that this is Tacoma Park. And please, council members, make this part of the history of Tacoma Park, and thank you, Tacoma Park, and those of you who speak for it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? All right, we will then turn it back to the council. Are there any additional council comments on this, Doug?
First of all, I would like to thank all of you for coming and for sharing your passion and your eloquence with us this evening. A very brief story. This afternoon, I went to get some copies made at one of our local businesses at the crossroads and got into a little discussion, as I was waiting actually, in addition to the copies, for some passport photos. I'm getting the hell out of town after this, as a federal government worker. I'm getting the hell out of town after this, as a federal government worker. And also, while I, I have to admire the bravery of my colleague here, who's also a federal government worker, there are a couple of us on the council, and we're very proud, by the way, to serve our government and to serve you. At any rate, we got into a conversation while I was waiting for the photographs to be developed, and the man basically said that he thought that these were some of the more dangerous and scary times that he has ever been through, and he was particularly concerned for his young son. And turns out, the man in the shop is an Iranian-American, and I said, "You're scared for people in your former country, Iran?" And he said, "No, I'm afraid for my fellow Americans." And so, we went on to talk about that for a bit, and, you know, it was just sort of startling and surprising to me to have this conversation, and to realize that what's important now is somewhere in the world to find men and women with intelligence and good sense. And in looking at this resolution tonight, and I think maybe you would join me in this observation, there's a certain beauty and majesty, a certain eloquence to the formality of what, what otherwise is a fairly dry tract, but it really captures you and captivates you, mainly because it is a document that, the intent of which, is to hold our leaders accountable. And, you know, I've heard all of the arguments against going with this resolution, I've heard the arguments that it's too late, it really won't matter because there's only 18 months left, I've heard other arguments that nothing will get done, the government will be paralyzed, and what's important is to get the troops out of Iraq, and that somehow this will interfere with that. Well, I just don't buy it. I, I don't think that's the case, because what we're really doing tonight here is defending the Constitution, and what could be more important than that? I do think, I do think that there is probable cause to believe that high crimes and misdemeanors were committed, and that therefore I would support this resolution and hope that my colleagues will as well.
I would echo Councilmember Barry, and usually he's more eloquent than I can ever be. I think that one of the most important things about this resolution is that people cared enough to organize, to get people to show up, to hear your eloquence in speaking for this resolution, and I'm very proud to vote for it and represent you in that. I think it's, this resolution makes a very eloquent case for laying out the contempt that our president and vice president show for the rule of law in this country.
This isn't about the council tonight, I appreciate you all coming and, and bringing this to us, but this isn't about us on the council, it's about you, it's about giving voice to you, the people, or it's we, the people, right? And I thank you for bringing this to us, I, I thank you for standing up for what you know is right, and I thank you for being good Americans, and obviously, I'm going to vote for this.
I wanted to add a couple of things to the, what has been said this evening. One is that I very much appreciate everyone who came out this evening, and I appreciate all the heartfelt and eloquent sentiments that people expressed, I think that's extremely important. I think one of the things that is true of the council is that we are powerful to the extent that we represent our community, and certainly you have made a very good case and have given voice to, I think, a very persuasive case for the council's resolution. And so I think that these, that the council, as it speaks through this resolution, will be more powerful because of the support that you've given us. The other point I wanted to make is that, in some ways, I may be sort of a tough sell on this issue. Much as I disagree with Bush and Cheney, and I have disagreed with them frequently, I very much feel that impeachment needs to be made on the basis of illegal acts, not policy disagreements. I don't want to see impeachment become simply a form of recall. It's probably unfortunate that this administration has, in addition to all the policy disagreements, given me ample opportunities, ample examples of illegal acts. People have named them in some of the statements they've made, they've talked about the wiretapping, they've talked about the torture, those are clearly in, in opposition to existing law. I was one of those people who was around when the impeachment of Richard Nixon was discussed, and I do remember that there was some of the same sentiment. I remember the, in the days before the vote in the, in the Congress, there was some rumors, there were all kinds of rumors flying around, Richard Nixon was going to take over the army and have them, and put him in office by force, and that sounds kind of ridiculous in this day and age, but at the time, there were people who actually believed that. And I do find sort of the same kind of, of concerns here, and I think that Tacoma Park has a lot to be proud of, in that you have this many people who are willing to stand up and say what you think and what we think about this very important issue. I also want to note that two of my colleagues, actually, there's three, one who's not here this evening, who are in fact federal employees, who are in fact asking for the impeachment of their, their ultimate boss, I guess, in some sense, and I want to recognize their courage in, in being outspoken and speaking their mind on this issue too. And I am also very proud of Tacoma Park as a community, this is the community that I'm so pleased to be a part of, that people are willing to take a stand for things that they believe in, and I'm very proud to be able to support this resolution also.
Are there any additional council comments? All right, the impeachment resolution is before the council for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. I hope it's yourself you're giving a round of applause to, because you all did a very nice job. The council is going to take a very short recess and come back for the next item on the agenda.
Onto the next item on our agenda, which is the proposed first reading of the ordinance, revising rent stabilization. And before we get into that, there were a couple of issues that the council left before the staff that we wanted to get information on. Did you want to come back and talk to us about that, Sarah?
Okay. Did you want me to just talk about that, or did you want me to go over some of the other minor revisions that were made?
Why don't you go ahead with the whole thing?
Okay. Ken, do you want to?
I need my attorney.
As you may recall, we've gone through after many months of discussion and have developed a preliminary draft that you're considering receiving for the first reading. The most significant changes that are included within this draft are the nature of the properties that would be subject to rent stabilization, the annual rent increase allowance would be increased from 70% to 100% of the consumer price index, and the capital improvement in hardship rent increase petition process would be replaced by what is called a fair return petition. As the mayor indicated, there were some comments that we received regarding the nature and specifically the size of the properties that would be subject to the requirements for rent stabilization if the original draft were adopted. And then there were some questions regarding the indexing that was used during the fair return petition. If it's okay with the council, what I'd like to do is just briefly go through some of the minor revisions that were made based on conversations that we had at the council, and then go into more detail and follow up with the information that the mayor referenced in the beginning of the item. If you turn to the very first page of the ordinance with all the whereas, it's not numbered. It basically clarifies that the ordinance itself, if adopted, would become effective December 1st. On the first page with the red line, what we've done is in section, excuse me, point 010, identified how the base rents would be established for properties that prior to the adoption of this ordinance would not have been subject to rent stabilization. And depending upon the outcome of the conversation tonight regarding the size and occupancy of the units, these particular sections may or may not be appropriate. But they're there in case you decide to stay with the original proposal, which was to have any property with more than one housing unit become subject to rent stabilization. And that would have an impact on duplexes, primarily registered accessory apartments would continue to be exempt. It would also impact condominiums. And the section C establishes the base rent for owner-occupied condominiums. As we noted during the previous discussions, many of the condominium units are located in what were previously rent stabilized rental facilities. And rather than going back through all the rent reports and re-establishing the rent for that particular unit, based on the past history of the property, the owner would be able to establish a new base rent if they decided to rent the unit after occupying it for a period of 24 months. If you turn to the page-
Can you talk about the selection of 24 months?
It was a timeframe that was recommended by Dr. Barr. There's some flexibility with that, but that's what he's recommending at this point.
I believe it's also the time period which permits a residence to be called a-
Owner-occupied-
Owner-occupied-
Primary residence for tax-
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question? You say that at that point they could charge market rent. Was that Dr. Barr's recommendation?
That was staff's recommendation in terms of establishing a baseline base rent. Without the owner being able to establish that base rent, it would be problematic for them to go back to the rent that was charged by the prior owner without all of the information available regarding the operating expenses and capital, the cost of any improvements that were made to the property, et cetera. So frankly, if you purchased a condominium unit that was located within a rental facility that had been converted three years prior, you really don't, in all fairness to you, it's not appropriate to go back to that base rent that was established four years previously.
Right. And you made any consideration of a fraction of market rate?
No. The challenge with doing that is that the market rate for a particular unit varies so much from unit to unit, depending upon the size, the location, the condition of the property, that we're not in a position to establish that.
So the way this is written, then the rate would be market rate, and then it would fall under restrictions of rent control or rent stabilization from that point forward?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that only applies to condominium units?
That would apply for condominium units, and then properties that were not subject to rent stabilization prior to the adoption of this ordinance. And that's assuming that you were to go with the original draft, which included any facility with more than one housing unit, they would be able to establish their base rent at that point in time.
Right.
I mean, for a market rent, essentially it's what they're charging for rent at that point in time. And one would assume that it covers their operating expenses, and that's appropriate for that particular unit. If you turn to page four at the top of the page, we've added language that I'll talk about a little bit longer, but it gives you something to work from if you decide that you want to increase the types of properties that would not be subject to rent stabilization, specifically buildings with two or three dwelling units where the owner occupies one or more of those units. And again, I'll come back to that in a moment. On page seven, we missed this one, but at the very bottom, it's standards for rent increases pursuant to a fair return petition. Right now, what we're proposing is 50%. The indexing when evaluating the fair return is set at 50% of the consumer price index increase. The mayor had suggested that that be increased to 70%, and Dr. Barr has given us information on that, which, again, I'll go over in a moment. But that would be where that change would take place. On page nine, after additional conversation with Dr. Barr, we have shortened up or refined the definition of the, or redefined the prime rate loan interest that would be used when calculating the fair return. Previously, he was recommending primary mortgage rate surveys using that interest rate information, and now he's just recommending that we go with a prime rate as established by the Federal Reserve Bank.
Doesn't it say prime rate plus 2%?
Plus 2%, thank you. On page 10, we've clarified that if a landlord were to apply for a fair return petition, that it would apply to the entire building and not just a specific unit. And on page 11, we've rewritten that section so that it also clarifies that the petition would be for the entire current year. So it's for a 12-month period. Essentially, that limits a landlord to applying for a fair return once, submitting a request for fair return rent increase once a year. And then the very last section, again, this is a page that's not numbered, would identify that capital improvement rent increase petitions, that particular section of the ordinance would be repealed immediately upon adoption of this. However, if a landlord had completed work for capital improvement after January 1st of this year, what had started but not completed prior to July 16th of this year, or had made some substantial investment in arranging for the capital improvement in 2007 prior to July 16th, they would still be able to apply for a capital improvement rent increase petition. Those timeframes fall within the schedule that's currently available to landlords in the current ordinance, where you can apply six months prior to or six months following a capital improvement rent increase petition.
So that basically rules out a property owner beginning a capital improvement increase now?
Right. In order to get that submitted prior to the adoption of this ordinance, again, assuming it's adopted and becomes effective December 1st. Exhibit A is the information that Dr. Barr, which should be immediately following the text of the proposed ordinance, was prepared by Dr. Barr. And on the right half of the chart, he's laid out the differences or the variable impact of the different indexes that were proposed. Originally, the proposal was that for operating expenses incurred prior to 2007, that an indexing rate of 50% of the increase in the consumer price index be used to evaluate the fair return. And then following 2007, we'd go up to 100% of the increase. The mayor has suggested or had proposed increasing that 50% to 70% of the increase in the consumer price index. And if you look at the very bottom line, where it says monthly rent unit, that'll show you the differences and the impact of the rent for that hypothetical unit. So for example, if the current rent were $900 a month for that specific unit, if you use the 50% indexing, it would increase the rent to $933. If you use the 70% indexing, it would be $960, and 100% would be up to $1,000.
And the assumption here is that the base year is 1990?
You know, I didn't ask that, and I'm not sure if that-
I mean, 33, because I haven't tracked the CPI, but if that's not right-
Yes, it is 1990. If you look at the comments, the first one.
Yes.
I spoke with Dr. Barr to see if there was a recommendation that he said, and basically it's a policy decision on the part of the city council.
Good question.
Yes.
Do you know if the increases that you show in this chart are fairly typical? Or is this a, basically what I'm asking, is this a completely unique example, never to be repeated again, or is this a somewhat typical one?
Right. I mean, the percentages aren't unlike in Greece that we've seen before, but we've only had a few hardship petitions. So it's hard to say how typical these expense ratios are.
Lynda Walker and I, prior to the meeting, we just ran through the hardship rent increase petition that Southern Management had submitted. And using the 50% indexing figure, they received a rent increase of approximately 10%. If we used for the 70% indexing, I think it went up to 13% or 13%. So it's fairly consistent with what you might expect.
Thank you.
Exhibit B goes into additional detail regarding some of the options. If you recall, our original proposal again was that if you have a rental facility with more than one housing unit, regardless of the occupancy of the units in the building, that that building would be subject to rent stabilization, the exception being if it was an accessory apartment. The net effect of that is that all of the condominium units that are currently rented now, presuming they're owned by someone who only, excuse me, presuming they're owned by someone who only owns that particular unit and is only renting that particular unit to come apart, because of the nature of the facility, would become subject to rent stabilization. And that there were a number of duplexes in the community, properties that are not registered as accessory apartments because they were originally designed and constructed as a two-unit building, that would become subject to rent stabilization. There was some concern expressed regarding the impact that that would have on properties throughout the community. We were asked- We were asked after the council meeting to investigate what the impact might be if the council were to look at another option, which would be to exempt smaller rental facilities where the owner lived in one of the, one or more of the units. We have a couple of property owners that live in two or three of the units in their building. So what the first chart does is attempt to break that down and present that information to you. Under the two-unit rental facility, we have three categories. The first are registered accessory units. Some people mistakenly assume that they have an accessory apartment, and they really don't. They might, but it's not registered with the county. So unless it's registered with the county, it's not considered a legal unit. The numbers that I have here in the columns for the various wards were based on the registry that the county has as far as its registered and approved accessory apartments. So you can note that the number and the distribution of accessory units varies greatly from ward to ward, with the largest being in Ward 3. We've also broken, included within that category of two-unit rental facility, all of the two-unit rental facilities which are not accessory apartments that have an owner living in one of the units. And again, that varies from ward to ward, with the largest number of those types of units being located in Ward 5. So if you were, for example, to expand the exception to owner-occupied two-unit facilities, right now, that would exempt 43 properties in Tacoma Park. We've added the third column just to let you know what the potential impact might be, because there are a lot of other two-unit rental facilities in Tacoma Park which are currently not occupied by the owner. So you could go up to as many as 144 properties that would be exempt from rent stabilization if you were to choose to amend the ordinance in that direction.
Isn't that, is that the number of buildings and the number of units? It looks like the number of...
Buildings.
So if you're looking at the total number of units, it would be double that?
Well, actually, if the owner's living in, if it's a two-unit building and the owner's living in one, it's the same number of facilities...
So the others and the owner occupied, yet the remainder are...
It's all buildings.
Yes. Thank you.
And then we've done the same thing for the three-unit rental facilities where the owner lives in one or more of the units, and again, for four-unit rental facilities where the owner lives in one or more of the rental units. There are very few four-unit rental facilities where the owner lives in the building. It's about 5% of those that are licensed. Though, again, the impact, or the potential impact is greater if you look at the total number of properties that, at some point in time, the owner could move into the building, and as such, assuming that the ordinance were revised accordingly, could become exempt from rent stabilization. What has been recommended is that if you were to do this, to expand the category of properties that would be exempt from rent stabilization, that this would be on an application basis. So you'd have to go through on an annual basis and apply for that exemption, verify that you were an owner, that you were living in the building, and again, I believe Dr. Barr is recommending that you look at a 24-month period as far as the occupancy of that property. And he's given us some suggestions in terms of how you might be able to document that. Following that, it's just...
Can I just give a clarification?
Yeah.
For the 24-month occupancy, it would be that it was under rent stabilization unless and until the 24-month occupancy occurred?
Right. Either you were, you'd lived in it for two or more years, 24 months or more now, and you'd continue to be exempt from rent stabilization, presuming you are...
If you had been in it for 24 months prior to adoption.
At any point in time.
Okay, but...
So this is 24-month standard at the time that you applied?
Now, and in the future.
Right? And so if somebody, if the law passed and somebody showed up for the very first time, and they had been there for 24 months, they would be exempt?
Right. But in five years, somebody came in, applied for an exemption, and they could document that they'd been there for 24 months, then that property would, could be approved for an exemption from rent stabilization at that point in time?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that it was that those units could currently, might currently be exempt, then when the law passed, depending on the situation, they could be under the law, then they could go back to exempt again?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
I did, but I was still processing the previous one. On the two-unit buildings, what occurs to me is that, in essence, if we were to add this provision, then, I was talking with Josh a little bit earlier about this, it seems to me it makes them similar to an accessory apartment situation. Is that correct? That is...
In the sense that it's an owner-occupied building?
Owner-occupied building with a rental unit in it.
Right. In the pure sense of the definition.
My concern is that you have two, you know, two houses next to each other, and were in all way, you know, all other ways similar. One was an accessory apartment because they'd gone through the approval process with the county, and the other one, for whatever reason, hadn't. And then if you made this exception, then those two houses would be treated way more, much more similarly, basically, because they both would be, you know, exempt, in some sense, from rent control. Is that correct?
Presuming that the property that really is an accessory apartment but is not registered would qualify as an accessory apartment. Because at some point in time, we've had folks that have had illegal accessory apartments where the counties come through and say, "Your ceilings are too low," and they've shut them down, so they've lost all of their rental facility.
Okay. Putting that aside.
Yeah, putting that aside, yes. It would make them more equal. And then, as an informational standpoint, we put together, pulled together all the information, the condominiums that are currently located in Tacoma Park, and broken them down into two categories. Those that are basically established, and the units are, have sold or are in the process of being sold, and those that are underway. They typically tend to be properties that we've been working with, the tenants' association, through the capacity building program to purchase, renovate, and convert the building over to a condominium. So at this point in time, there are 285 condominium units in Tacoma Park. Based on the state tax records as of last week, 181 of those, the owners are declaring that particular unit as their primary residence. And our assumption is that the balance, or about 36, 37% of the units, are either vacant, available for sale, or being rented. So if we were to, if the council were to continue with the proposal regarding the single rental, the single housing unit within a building, you would be adding up to 285 rental condominium units to the mix. Not all of those, again, would be rental, but the potential is there.
Do we know how many of the 104 that are available for sale or rent might have had an owner living there for at least 24 months? Is there any way to tell that?
Not without going through and looking at the tax records for all 104.
But could, if there is a unit which is currently...
Well, let me back up.
Being rented, but is, but the owner lived in it at some point? Or the owner lived in it for 24 months prior to the point that it was immediately being rented? That's not very clear.
No, I understand the question. I just have to go back and look. There's no, the way it's drafted at this point in time, it does not require the owner to have lived there at the point that the ordinance was adopted. So if they could prove that they'd lived there as their primary residence for at least 24 months prior to the rent index, they would not be, they could apply for an exemption.
Or they would be exempt from the initial, but not, they would then have to...
Establish a base rent, yes.
Yeah, so establish the base rent, but they still would be able, prohibited from raising the rent more than once every 12 months, and then they would presumably be under the annual restriction, annual increase restrictions, right?
Correct.
Because it's just in setting the base rent.
Okay.
All right.
That's all we have for you.
I wanted to, just to make sure I understand that. Going back to the first, the first exhibit, the table that Dr. Barr did about the alternate fair return ratios, I just want to make sure that I understand it. And what I did was I did sort of an alternative. If you take the same numbers that are here, and you look at the unit which was running for 667 in the base year, and then 900 under a 35% increase, he's making the assumption that the CPI increase is 50%, and that the, 70% of that is 35%. So that's where he gets the 35%, right?
Yeah, that's...
I think that's right. And so if you went with 100%, if you said, okay, if rent stabilization had allowed 100% CPI increase over that same period of time, whatever it was, it doesn't really matter what the period of time was, you would end up with a monthly rent per unit of $1,000. That's 50% over 667. So that's what it would have been under 100% CPI increases over whatever that period of time was. And then if you look at the 50%, 70%, and 100% indexing, the halfway in between 900, which is where you get with the 75, the 70% CPI, and 1,000, which is where you get with 100% CPI, halfway in between those two would be 950, right? And then, and 950 is closest to 960, which is 70%. Is that, is that follow, can you follow what I'm doing? Ruben follows what I'm doing, does anybody else follow what I'm doing? What I'm trying to do is I'm, the point that I was trying to get to, and I realize I didn't explain it very well.
Wait, if Ruben understands, let him explain.
But one of the reasons for using a fair return standard other than 50% is to assist property owners who feel that under the 70% annual increase, the 70% of CPI annual increase, they were not able to cover their costs. It says that if there had been a 100% CPI annual increase, you would have been up to a certain level. With a 70%, you're up to this level. And so you set a standard for what is fair at halfway in between, sort of split the difference, the compromise position, in other words.
I don't hear anybody agreeing.
One of the things that Dr. Barr asked me to point out to you is that this is sort of to maintain the profit margin, if you will?
Yes.
And so that, one of the challenges is to keep it separate from the 70% of the Consumer Price Index tied to the rents, because the operating expenses aren't necessarily tied to the rents either. So he cautioned that what is, what is being discussed, that those two particular things not get mixed up.
What I'm, what I have heard property owners say is that the 70% was inadequate because their expenses were going up at 100% of CPI. That's, that's one of the arguments that I've heard, or higher. But, you know, I guess, I think you have to set some kind of reasonableness standard. And it's possible to have increases that are higher than that for various reasons. But if we're doing it like across-the-board standard, 100% of the CPI, or 100% of what costs generally go up over that period of time, gives you a certain level of what you would expect. I'm not saying this very well. Over time, if you make the assumption that the operating expenses themselves go up with the Consumer Price Index, and if you make the assumption that the revenues go up with the Consumer Price Index, then your profit, your difference, your net operating income goes up with the Consumer Price Index, right?
Correct.
So two parts of the equation go up, a certain rate, the third one has to go up. And so the complaint that I have heard, that many of the property owners make, is that the fair return standard isn't fair to them because their expenses are, in fact, going up with the CPI, and this is not providing enough of an allowance for that. Now, I understand the point that Dr. Barr is making, but it seems to me there's two different ways of looking at it. And what I'm trying to say is that I think that a compromise position in between seems to me to be reasonable. And it, I think it, to my mind at least, it protects tenants while being more fair to property owners. And that's, but I do, I understand what he's saying, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not getting those two concepts confused. I'm just saying that the argument that's being made for increases in net operating expenses is based on the assumption that those are going up with 100% of the CPI. At least, that's what I'm hearing people say. Or they say more because the, of utility costs, but some property owners pay utility costs and some don't. So I don't know that we can base it on that. And I think, I think we are going to have to go back and take a look at that issue.
Right. I think Dr. Barr says that raising the adjustment from 50% to 70% would result in increases that are allowable increases that are greater than the 70% of CPI annual allowance. So it would kind of help landlords make up lost ground.
Yes. I know it would create increases that are greater than that, yes. And I know, and I think that it ought to be said, that it would allow many property owners to raise rents beyond what they are currently charging. And, you know, and I think we have to acknowledge that. But it seems to me that it is one way of sort of trying to take a reasonable position, to take both of those positions into account.
This adjustment is for up to 2007.
The 70% would be applied to everything prior to 2007, and then after, it would be 100%.
So as we move forward, this will become essentially less of an issue, if you will.
Right.
Correct.
Because it goes up to 100% because the assumption that you don't have those, those same contingency issues on the, on the numbers going forward.
Correct.
Presumably from this point forward, right?
When they would go through and look at the fair return petitions, everything, all the calculations that would cover that period prior to 2007 would be based on a 50% or a 70% indexing. And then everything after 2007 would be based on 100% indexing, which would match the indexing that you're using or have proposed for the annual rent increase allowance.
Does that address your concern?
Going forward, yes. I think going forward, it's fairly simple, because the council's making a policy change. And the question is whether we want to make essentially a retroactive policy change going backwards, and it is, in fact, a retroactive policy change. And, you know, I don't, I don't think we should say it's anything other than that. But it seems to me that, and it would allow some property owners to, you know, take some substantial rent increases.
Again, there would be the cap of 15% per year, which is included within the text of the ordinance.
That's right. I'm seeing folks over here nodding.
I think you read, I think you read that correctly.
Does that mean you don't agree, you don't care, you're asleep?
Let me just say that I apologize for not being here last week to hear testimony. Like I said, I got back in town at 4 o'clock. I haven't read this proposal. So whatever we do tonight, I'm going to be abstaining and performing due diligence to catch up, and... catch up and be ready to go forward from there. So I'm gathering information tonight, but I'm a little behind the curve on this one.
Given that, I wonder if it makes sense for us to just postpone this first reading for a week until we have a more full council to participate in this, because this is one of the most important laws that we have here in DeKalb Park.
The, the council has spent several weeks, several months, working through this issue in great detail. And I'm afraid that if we postpone it until after the council recess, what we will have is people sort of, the edges becoming fuzzy and we'll end up going back over the, some of the same stuff again, having lost some time. I have, I have no problem postponing it for a week if people would be willing to, um, have a council meeting on the, uh, 7th of August, I think it is, 6th of August, whatever that day is, um, to make, to take the vote on second reading.
I think that makes more sense than having just, uh, four members of the council voting on it.
Well, um, I would, I would suggest we move forward and have, um, the vote on first reading. We will have in fact six council members here next week. One of the values of having more than one vote on ordinances is that you can have a, a changing cast of characters and still people can have an opportunity to, to state their position.
Okay, could we go through the, uh, potential changes and, and decide which of these we're going to do?
Most of the changes, I think, except the two that we're talking about, the council has already talked about, unless you would like to take a different position, I think the council's pretty much come to consensus on all of them except these two.
Okay, the one you were most recently talking about, and then also the question on the accessory for the.
The one that I was most recently talking about is on page.
The first.
Seven, um, under section 6.20.090, rent increases pursuant to a fair return petition. B, which is standards for rent increases. And number one is fair return is defined as base year net operating income adjusted by, it says 50%. And then 50% up until 2007 and 100% since 2007. We can set that 50% at any number we want. Dr. Barr's recommendation has been 50%. And as I understand his recommendation, it's based on the fact that that would produce a result which was consistent with the council's past policy position in adopting a 70% of CPI annual increase. In that if you keep the, um, fair return ratio to 50%, you end up with a result that's very similar to 70% of the CPI.
Okay. That said, then I would, uh, support that since I also support staying at 70% of CPI.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more inclined to, um, agree with the mayor on this to go to 70% in this particular calculation for the reasons she cited.
Yes, I would go to 70% and 100% after 2007.
It sounds like, um, at least among the people who are here, and I, and I would note also that the last time we talked about it, and it doesn't count as a vote, but, um, Colleen was supportive of the 70% also, at least verbally supportive of it.
And I'm supportive of at least 70%.
You were out of this conversation.
Well, I've been here for this one.
Yeah. I, I think you've probably been here for all of it except very, very little, I mean.
Except the written language.
Yeah, except the written language, yes. Um, I think that there is a consensus on 70%. So perhaps we can then put that into the.
I wouldn't call it consensus.
Can I see if anybody wants 80?
I don't think 80 makes sense to me. I'm not seeing anybody saying yes. And then the second thing that we're talking about, um, is a potential, which I think you've got in under.
It's on page four.
Page four, at the top of the page. Um, right now, we are exempting from rent stabilization, single-unit residences, um, which basically means single-family homes and townhouses. And a couple of us after the meeting, um, last time, um, were talking about perhaps it would make sense to exempt very small units that were one of the, one of the units, very small buildings, one of which, one of the units of which was occupied by the owner. I don't think we picked a number. You've got two or three, um, and we could go with one or the other. But, um, I do, this was, this was the point that I believe, um, council member Austin Lane was so concerned about at the last meeting, she was very concerned about people who were not previously, um, covered by rent stabilization, um, becoming covered as a result of this law. And the people who fell into that category, who spoke to us at the hearing, were, um, owner residents of small buildings, um, who had not, if, if you say live in a two-unit building and you live in one unit and the other unit is rental, currently you wouldn't be covered by rent stabilization because you only own one rental unit. However, you would come under rent stabilization because you had a two-unit building, even though only one of those units was for rent. Um, there was also an individual who came and spoke to us who was in a three-unit building, but two of his units, he or family members were occupying. So he had only one rental unit in a three-unit building. And he has, for that reason, he was not previously under rent stabilization. But because his building was three-unit building, he would come under rent stabilization even though he had only one rental unit. And so those were the concerns that were brought to the council at the hearing and the concerns that were voiced. I remember council member Austin Lane voicing that concern, I don't remember whether there were other people also. And so that, um, myself, um, and council member Barry, um, and council member Snipper were talking after the meeting and wondering whether there was a way to deal with that concern. Um, and as a result of our conversation, I spoke to the staff and asked whether there was a way that we could do that. And the staff is, is, from that request, has put together this particular provision.
Mayor Porter?
Yes.
I know the material that was prepared for us in the appendix, uh, showed, uh, the effect of this on two-unit, three-unit, or four-unit buildings. And if I read this correctly, it says that, uh, we have only, uh, seven four-unit buildings that are, have an owner-occupied unit.
Yes, though there are a total of 144 unit buildings that are currently licensed.
Okay. So if we, um, in this, uh, section, on whatever page that was, I forget now, if we change that to, uh, to say four, uh, the effect would be, uh, including seven more buildings than if we said three. Is that correct?
It would be cumulative, so you, unless you just decided.
There would be seven more than if we said three, though.
Correct. Based, based on the information I had at the time this was prepared.
There would be seven more buildings, but 21 additional units because.
Right.
You would make this, because once you get to those bigger buildings, exempting one building is exempting several more units.
I, I will just note that, uh, you know, one of the landlords was passing a petition in my neighborhood, and, um, he found that, uh, a number of the residents in my neighborhood were supportive of, of that, uh, of that change.
The, the problem I see is that it, um, as you can see, opens us to, uh, potentially a lot more units.
Right.
The landlord moves into, uh, one of the units or has somebody in his family move in, um, and then the whole building is exempt.
I think that begs the question.
This is how we, this is how we abride that sort of matching the accessory apartment idea, um, concentrating on the smaller units.
Sarah, it raises a question of how do we verify that they are in fact owner-occupied?
They would need to apply for, um, an exemption, if you will, very similar to MHP or Victory Housing. If you'll note, that category is included in the same section where, um, newly constructed rental facilities and properties that are subject to regulatory agreement, uh, limiting the income of the tenants and establishing base, or establishing affordable rent levels. So what we have envisioned is that if you were to do this based on the occupancy of one or more of the units, that the property owner would have to apply for that exemption on an annual basis and document that they were, um, an owner-occupied. And you could do that through a variety of ways. Including? Uh, driver's license, um, homeowner's tax exemption, voter registration form, and other types of, um, documentation that's, is address-based.
Okay. So as long as they receive their mail at that address, it could be considered owner-occupied?
Not necessarily.
Well, um, that type of thing isn't unusual, uh, to try to circumvent the rules.
Right. And that's what we've, um, we chatted about this at the staff level, and, and frankly, from our perspective, that will be one of the, the, um, most challenging aspects of verifying this, not only the, the tenancy, but that you actually are an owner-occupied
Like I can think of a unit now that is, uh, labeled as owner-occupied, but they've sublet the unit, uh, to someone and don't actually live in the.
And unfortunately, that happens more often than not. We have, um, I've come across a couple of property owners that have three or four primary residents of the community. So frankly, from my perspective, I don't think we'd rely on the property tax base, or the property data information unless, um, there was another form of verification and it wasn't owner-occupied. And that could be through another form. Um, in San Francisco, uh, they do use a voter registration card, the exemption itself, driver's license, and other, um, certification or documentation that's issued by a public agency, that type of thing.
Yeah, this is another reason why I favor the smaller one, because it's much more similar to the accessory unit kind of concept. It's always, it's puzzled me a little bit that somebody has an accessory apartment and their neighbor just has an apartment, yeah.
I think there's a couple, I, I would agree with, uh, council member Snipper, and I think there's a couple of good reasons to keep it to, to two-unit or smaller. Um, one is that if, if what we're trying to do is prevent people who are currently not under rent stabilization from coming under rent stabilization, um, I would guess that the vast majority of the people in the three and four-unit facilities are currently under rent stabilization. There would only be people in the three-unit buildings who have themselves or relatives occupying two of the units. And in the four-unit buildings, only those people whose themselves or relatives occupy three of the four units, who would be exempt now. And so the rest of the people are already under rent stabilization, so we're not bringing them under something that they're not currently doing, which I understand was, um, council member Austin Lane's concern. The other, the other issue that I have is the sort of the risk issue. Among the two-unit facilities, if you take the 144 units and you look at the number who are either, uh, registered accessory or owner-occupied, you've got, by my calculations, um, 75 of the 144 are, are exempt. And that leaves, you know, the risk, if you will, of people thinking, oh, good, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, you know, someone who can sort of hold my, my residence for me in these units and make, and take them off the rent stabilization rolls, is, is relatively low, because it looks like more than half of them are exempt anyway. But with the three, and particularly the four units, um, only seven of the four are owner-occupied. And so presumably, there's a lot of opportunity for the owners of the other 140 to either move in or try and make it look like they've moved in, um, because the benefit to them is enormous, because they get to take three units out of rent stabilization. And so I, I worry about the, the issue there of, um, you know, people having a very, very large incentive to try and make it look like they live there and, you know, creating incentive to, to try and get around the law.
The potential impact on a unit basis, if you were to, um, exempt upon application three and four-unit owner-occupied rental facilities, it's about 750 individual rental units.
Yeah. And I, and I would worry about that.
Could, I have a clarification also, a small one. Um, on the language that you have inserted in here where it says two or three.
Oh, it's to give you an option.
Was to give, okay.
Well, that, no, actually.
Oh, it's not.
It was, because obviously the, the one unit would really be the condominiums that covered elsewhere.
Right.
So it would be two and three units.
So if we scratched or three, that wouldn't do anything to the substance of it? If we remove.
Although that's my question, that is my question.
If, if the council, as a matter of policy, scratched the words or three, and it said all rental units in a building with two dwelling units where the owner occupies da-da-da, that's not gonna, legally, that still hangs together.
Correct. That, that would be fine if that's, if that's the policy.
And while we're looking at that particular thing, can we replace when with the phrase in which? I think it reads better.
Yeah, I, I think either way, it, that would be a bit, I mean, the, the point is to make it clear that, uh, that's, the exemption continues while the, while it's owner-occupied.
So there seemed to be a consensus to go with the 70%. Is there a consensus to go with the two or, yes, yes, yes?
The only way you get the 70% being a consensus is we redefine consensus, but we won't go into that debate.
I am, I am assuming that, um, since, um, council member Clay spoke strongly of it before, that she would have agreed with that. And she will in fact get a chance to vote on it next week.
That'll bring it closer to consensus, but I do agree with two.
Okay. So I think we've got two. Okay. Those were the only remaining issues, unless someone would like to go back into one of the ones that the council cited before. And, and, and I should say that, um, there is opportunity for, um, proposed amendments at second reading if council member Williams, council member Clay, or I guess those are the only two people who wouldn't be voting this time, who are going to be there the next week, wish to make changes to the law. You know, we have had people make amendments to first reading, we've had people make amendments to second reading. Um, that's why we have two readings of the ordinance that allows adequate time for people to take a look at it.
If, if I can ask if, uh, Ms. Danes is going to be in the office this week?
Yes, I am.
Lucky you. If I, if I need some clarifications, I will talk with her.
Okay. Is the council ready to move forward on first reading of this ordinance?
Is there a public comment?
Yes, there is. I'm just, I'm just asking the council if we should start the process. And, um, we, and we need to begin the process, we need someone to actually move the ordinance. And, and it has been moved and seconded before even the words got out of my mouth, so, um, yes.
As amended with the 70% indexing and the two units?
My understanding is that the mover and seconder did it with a 70% indexing ratio and the two-unit owner-occupied exemption. Okay. And they, they tell me that that is correct. So the, the, um, ordinance is before the council. Are there any additional council comments before we go to public comments? All right. So we will open it up to public comments, and I would ask people if they would, um, again, state their name and keep their comments to three minutes. Thank you.
If a policy is implemented, its infrastructure needs to be created and sustained. The philosophy of the council needs to be subsidized as a line item in your budget. The city should not make landlords pay 100% of the cost of the city's affordable housing program, particularly when the resources are unavailable to ensure tenants qualify for this benefit. Eliminating the capital improvement petition, the only feasible way of improving properties will only lead to dilapidated, antiquated, and inadequate buildings, most notably for the tenants. The very people rent control claims to serve will be affected most negatively by elimination of the rent increase petition. The hardship petition, as amended to be the fair return petition, is ironically not fair. It will never be sufficient. The administrative paperwork, as noted in the ordinance, can take up to 18 months on the part of the city. Landlords who are already losing money on their investments are essentially expected to put out the money in advance for improvements such as a new roof or water heater, and wait for the city to determine, to determine if it is in fact approved, but only after navigating the maze of paperwork necessary to file, and potentially going bankrupt in the process. Further, the increase of the CPI from 70 to 100% is quite simply a facade of compromise for the council to hide behind. Utilizing the 100% standard does not balance out with the elimination of the rent increase petition in any way, shape, or form. Let's take a look at the example that's been provided, a base rent of $650 in 2006. Essentially, increasing the CPI to 100% makes a rent an additional $7.74, hardly enough to cover the cost of a new roof or the 54% increase in the PUCO commercial usage charges. Fact is that the council has remained steadfast in their views of rent control and related legislation without talking to key stakeholders, landlords, tenants, business owners, church leaders, and homeowners. Involvement of stakeholders is not only just good business practice, but the first thing you learn in any nonprofit, higher education, or grassroots organization. It is the key to successful and democratic process that has been continually been ignored by the council. The consultant chosen formed a proposal seemingly felt, which fell in line with already preconceived ideas, and now the council is here to rubber stamp it. The issue demands and deserves a more thorough study on the full impact of landlords, tenants, and our community. Landlords here tonight are clearly not affluent, capitalistic, greedy businessmen, men and women. They are dedicated to their community and their tenants.
Can you wrap up?
Yep. They are quite simply trying to make a living just like you and I. Take out the word landlord from this debate and put in small business owner, and how fair does this legislation sound? Not fair. In closing, I'd like to respectfully ask the council to, at the very least, postpone the vote on rent stabilization and elimination of the capital improvement petition until a commission is formed to involve all key stakeholders, including tenants, landlords, homeowners, business owners, church leaders, and local business association, and the entire council is in attendance to vote. If this is a community issue, why not involve the entire community?
Thank you.
I'm not used to having to lift a microphone shorter than most people. My name is Mark Kessel. I want to follow up on a comment that was just made here. Landlords, for the most part, have been allowed in the room, but not only given a seat at the table. As a result, you don't really know all the unintended consequences of the draft in part. I want to tell you about one of them. This is a significant policy decision that has not been discussed, and you're quite possibly not even aware of. If, the way this ordinance is drafted, if I'm a landlord, I've got to submit a fair return petition. I can only do it once a year, and it's got to include every unit in my building. If I have a unit that is trashed by a tenant, or there's an accident that does damage to a unit, and let's say I've got to put in $5,000, $6,000, which is even that a modest amount to fix up the unit, when I go for a fair return petition, that expense will probably be capitalized, and it'll be spread out amongst all the units, which means that if there is one tenant who causes damage, all the other tenants in the building have to pay for that damage through their rent increases. Now, that's not an unreasonable position to take, but it's equally reasonable to say, no, that increase ought to be limited to that unit. Council hasn't addressed this at all, okay? I would think that at a minimum, the council would want to think about that a little bit before passing the ordinance. There are many other changes of policy in here that I don't think the council's even thought about. Until you invite people to sit down and give you their perspective in detail, and actually have some back and forth, you're not going to know about them. I have, which I'll pass up front in a moment, a list of about a half a dozen or so proposed amendments, which are not radical, they don't propose to radically change the draft, but contain some changes. One of them is the CPI indexing that the mayor has addressed. I agree with Councilmember Williams, it ought to be highly 70%, but it would take more than three minutes I've got to give you all the reasons. Some of the others are, there's an assumption of 40% of your gross revenue being your net operating income in the base year, it ought to be higher than that, I think. The definition of current year is at odds with the definition of petition year in the current law. I don't know any reason why you'd want to change that, because what you've got builds in delays of up to six months before a landlord can get reimbursed for the expense they have to put out. I don't think you intended to change it one way or the other, but that's what the wording does. Landlords, as a matter of administrative convenience for the city and everyone involved, should be able to both pick their own base year, and the base year ought to be a fiscal year, because that's what the rent reports are based on. And it'll be a lot easier to determine that. I'll wrap up in just one second. You also ought to have a sunset provision. There was a kind of half-assed sunset provision in the last law, but this is a situation that's changing from year to year, and this law should not be permanent, it ought to be revisited by the council perhaps every three years. And I'll just say, I want to support the people who are saying, this is too important in ordinance, and there are too many things in here that you really haven't had a chance to look at closely and back, back and forth, for it to be decided without more deliberation and without all the council members present to vote on it. And I'll pass up copies to the clerk.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Robbie Kimball. I live at 116 Uli Avenue. I just bought a condominium. Boy, your timing is great. Who's for that? At one point, I lived in a rental apartment on Houston Court. It was a two-bedroom rental apartment. I didn't need two bedrooms, but I could afford it, and it was a great unit, really big. I became friends with the owners of that building. The family had owned that building and the building next to it since 1982 in one case, 1984 in the other. They were very proud of how well they took care of those buildings. Their tenants are very fortunate when they have openings. It's word of mouth to fill them. They don't even need to advertise. Landlords are not necessarily greedy. They're certainly not necessarily wealthy. In my experience, these people, who are now my clients, as I'm a realtor and they're now my clients, they're selling their buildings because they can't make ends meet anymore. The ends don't even wave at each other anymore. They are, they just can't do it. They really try. And since 1990, it's been more difficult, and they've cut corners and done everything they could, and they just cannot make ends meet. And I, I think it's a real shame that, that the current system rewards frequent turnover in the ownership of these buildings. The rental stock in Tacoma Park is aging. A lot of it is not in great shape, and to whatever extent the landlords have less income to maintain that stock, it really is sad for the tenants who need affordable housing and are getting a diminishing quality and quantity of affordable housing in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stowe Henson. As an owner of a four-unit building, I would like to address a few comments that were made up here by the council members. First and foremost, it's ironic that 90% of all financial institutions have a cutoff at four units that allow for personal financing as opposed to commercial financing. It's very nice that that's how financial institutions handle the sizes of buildings. So I, I just ask you to look at the four-unit cutoff, because that's what generally the industry looks at. As far as your fear of opening up so many units to being out of rent control on the four unit, I would like to point out that the last time I checked, buildings don't have wheels, and as such, they stay where they are. And if Tacoma Park has rent control, which it is very successful at keeping rents down, as a business owner, you are forced by the market situation to hold the rents at where everybody else is, whether you're under rent control or not. I rent mine for $10,000, this other guy rents it for 500, I'm not going to get much business. You just have to look at it, again, somewhat at a fair market system, although obviously it doesn't count much here. The, the next issue is where you establish your baseline rents for those that unfortunately that will be put under rent control. I know myself personally that one, one particular building went under rent control in the back, back in the 70s, where the owner was incredibly intelligent, that set their rents at $4,000 a month. Is there any program to say what it can be? And that's what they based their rents on. It's kind of nice, because it basically took them out of rent control, because that's what they said their base of rent was. What they do is give a rebate to their tenants if they pay their rent by the 15th of the month, of something like $2,500 or $3,000. So I say, let's rent everything for $10,000 a month. The next thing is, is all those that are property owners, by show of hands, how many here feel that affordable housing is a very good goal? Come on, everybody. Okay? There's not too much disagreement here. We're not in opposition with you. We're just looking at the means, and we're begging you, the ends do not justify the means of rent control. Let's find a better way. Please. This, it, it does work. There's no doubt about it. This does work, but there are better ways. Let's find them. Let's work together. We are not your enemies. You're not our enemies. We just want to work on this together. Finally, there were three questions last asked last week that two council members decided to answer, the rest did not. I would just like to paraphrase, and this will be my final thing. Why do you think it's public, good public policy, or do you think it's a good public policy to make landlords shoulder virtually all of the burden of affordable housing in Tacoma Park? Two, do you consider this fair? Why shouldn't all the residents of Tacoma Park share in this financial burden together? Three, if you were a landlord, and you found that your, and you find that your rents did not cover your expenses and mortgages, or your expenses and mortgages, what would you do? Please, for those that did not answer it last week, please answer it this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Josh Roddick. I live at 7401 Maple Avenue, and I'm not a renter or a landlord. I'm simply a homeowner. And the first point I would make is that I think it's a little bit of a misnomer, that the landlords are saying that they alone pay for the rent control. Everyone who owns a home in Tacoma Park pays higher taxes as a result of rent control. If rents went up to market rates, all the property taxes would be higher on the rental units, and property taxes would be lower on the homeowners. And I would say that I'm proud to pay higher property taxes so that my fellow residents can have an affordable, my hard-working fellow residents can have an affordable place to live, and happy about the diversity, economic diversity that creates for our community. However, I am sympathetic to landlords, and I commend the council for looking at the rent stabilization as it is today and trying to make it better. But I also think that we owe it to ourselves to relook at affordable housing in general in Tacoma Park, and to ask ourselves, what are we committed to? And I think that everyone in Tacoma Park, everyone on the council is deeply committed to affordable housing and having a diverse economic community. And so I think in the near future, we need to, I wouldn't step away from rent control as it exists now until we have alternatives in place to provide affordable housing for people in Tacoma Park. But I think we do need to look at more effective and efficient ways to provide affordable housing for people. And when we have those in place, then to come up with a migration plan to migrate from where we are now with rent control and rent stabilization to those more effective and efficient ways. I think Colleen Clay has brought up some of them, but I think if we, as a leading progressive community, if we scour the nation, look at other examples of communities and what they're doing throughout affordable housing, we can come up with better solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Richard Sherman. I live in a four-unit apartment house on Lincoln Avenue. I happen to own that apartment house also, and I'm trying to convince you people to, to eliminate rent control for very small apartments, four units or less. They're located, located throughout the city, and I'm sure you can tell which house is apartment house and which house is owner-occupied. The city right now tells me I can only rent the apartment for $738 for a one-bedroom apartment. You go across tiny branch, and the average there is $1,100. The difference between Montgomery County rent average and Tacoma Park average is the money that I don't have to put back into my apartments. And it shows, and the rest of the apartments show. Four units or less compromise 12% of the rental units. 88% are still under rent control under my plan. They are all, all dedicated to the poor. Tacoma Park is the only community that dedicates 100% of their rental stock to the poor. And I am asking you people to exempt very small apartments so that they will be able to fix up their apartments and also get the value they have for their investment. Why can't we do that for 12% of the apartment units? You will see a renaissance in this city if you did that. All those four-unit apartment houses would be able to fix their buildings up. Otherwise, we got this deep economic hole we're in, and you guys are not getting us out of this hole. This hole is getting larger every year, and all the rents in Montgomery County versus the rents in Tacoma Park are diverging, and they'll be like that forever. And the only way to do this is cut the small apartment owners from rent control. Evidently, the larger units have the economy of scale, and they can deal with rent control, but the very small apartment owners, the 12%, can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Warren Holmes, and I'm a landlord here in Tacoma Park. I probably know this issue better than any other landlord in Tacoma Park. I know it very hands-on, exactly the scope of what we're dealing with here. Honestly, we shouldn't vote on this issue tonight. I really believe it's unethical. We have two council members missing, and to be honest, I don't know if Councilmember Seaman should be voting on this issue, considering his voting to exempt himself from rent control. I really think there's some, some issues that need to be cleared up there, maybe
Why can't we do that for 12% of the apartment units? You will see a renaissance in this city if you did that. All those four-unit apartment houses would be able to fix their buildings up. Otherwise, we got this deep economic hole we're in, and you guys are not getting us out of this hole. This hole is getting larger every year, and all the rents in Montgomery County versus the rents in Tacoma Park are diverging, and they'll be like that forever. And the only way to do this is cut the small apartment owners from rent control. Evidently, the larger units have the economy of scale, and they can deal with rent control, but the very small apartment owners, the 12%, can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Warren Holmes, and I'm a landlord here in Tacoma Park. I probably know this issue better than any other landlord in Tacoma Park. I know it very hands-on, exactly the scope of what we're dealing with here. Honestly, we shouldn't vote on this issue tonight. I really believe it's unethical. We have two council members missing, and to be honest, I don't know if Councilmember Seaman should be voting on this issue considering his voting to exempt himself from rent control. I really think there's some issues that need to be cleared up. There may be people who can address the council here and everyone here exactly why you should be voting on this issue when you're voting to exempt yourself from these pretty terrible policies you're going to put in place. I also feel like I've stripped my civil rights because of this. We're about representation. Why not have everyone here? Why not have everyone with a voice? We've heard a lot from the two members that are not here tonight. They've had a lot to say, and to vote about, to vote on this without them here, it feels devious almost. It feels, it feels preconceived. I really feel like this whole thing should be tabled. It needs more discussion. There's, everyone has questions here, but no one has answers. Well, why shouldn't we lay this out? Why shouldn't we have a commission and all talk this through? Why not put it off a week because you're afraid of the election? Are you really afraid that the voters are going to be tired of supporting all this? Their tax bills, you know, they're finally going to get to the point where they're like, damn, I can't afford this anymore. Really, their tax bills are really going to get to them pretty soon, and everyone is going to care. You really should get them involved. All you do need to do is say, you know, that's why your taxes are so high. They don't necessarily understand that. We need to get the message across. You really shouldn't be voting on this tonight. We spent two years talking about it. What's another week? They're going to be here next week? What's one week when we've been waiting 104 weeks? Can't we just one week? One week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, seeing no one else. Is there any council comments on this proposal?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I'd like to address a couple of things that I heard during the public comments. Taking on first the last issue about me recusing myself because I do own a single-family house. I did recuse myself from all the discussions when the council was debating whether or not to exempt any units and what units to exempt. I, when the council had decided that the one-unit buildings would be exempted, that was something that had been decided in the work sessions, and the question then became between four units or one unit. Whichever way that vote went, my building was going to be exempted anyways, and it was at that point that I was able to come back into the discussion. If that were a question still on the table, I would again recuse myself. The other, the previous gentleman was talking about his smaller building, the four-unit building. I would say that the, my understanding of the new laws we're putting it in does offer new release for landlords that although it doesn't exempt the four-unit buildings, it does provide for new mechanisms for addressing concerns that you might have, whether it be through the fair return or some of the other changes that have been made to the law. And then lastly, I would just like to concur with Josh Wright, who was talking about the fact that rent control may not be the end-all answer to affordable housing. I certainly agree that affordable housing is important, and it's something that Tacoma Park residents have supported through their words and also through their taxes in the past. I would have liked to seen some other plans on the table so that we had something to work through, but in lieu of seeing any plans, whether it be from my colleagues here on the council or from city residents or landlords, the approach that we have, the plan that we have for continuing affordable housing, maintaining our affordable housing in Tacoma Park, is through the rent stabilization ordinance that is on our table tonight. And I would just suggest that that doesn't, a vote on this doesn't mean that the discussion ends. It means that we are making changes to the law. And if you look at the changes that are being made, they're primarily addressing concerns that landlords have expressed. We're trying to address some concerns the staff has brought to us with complexities and making it simpler. But I don't see that this council or the council after the next election is precluded in any way from addressing additional or alternative affordable housing approaches. But somebody's got to put one on the table for us to consider it. This is the one on the table.
I just want to speak briefly about a couple of things. One is the timing of this. I think that we have spent a lot of time discussing this rent stabilization issue, and even more than this particular iteration of it, there's been a lot of discussion of rent stabilization in the time that I've been on the council. I've been mayor for ten years. I was in the council for almost seven before that as a council member. And rent stabilization has been one of the issues of discussion in our community for that entire time. And I have talked to, I can't tell you how many tenants and I can't tell you how many property owners over that period of time about various issues having to do with rent stabilization. And I'm assuming that, you know, we'll continue to talk about it. We'll talk about it in this coming election. I'm sure we'll talk about it after that. This is not going to be the end of the discussion. But I think at some point, you do have to vote. I mean, we could spend the next two years, and as a matter of fact, some of the individuals who are concerned about how quickly we're moving now have also criticized us for taking so long. I mean, it seems to me either we're taking too long or we're moving too quickly, but not both. And I think that we can't, we can't shape the issues that we deal with around council members' vacation schedules. All the council members have been part of this discussion. Next week, I believe, all except one will be here to vote on this at second reading. And I think we need to move forward. It doesn't preclude us from making amendments later. It doesn't preclude us from spending a lot of time talking about administrative regulations, which I'm sure we will do. The other issue is, I wanted to talk just a minute about the issue of other types of programs to assure affordable housing. I appreciate the comment that Josh Wright made, and Councilmember Clay and I actually have been working on other things that we might do to assure affordable housing. And I think that she and I see very much eye to eye on some of those bigger issues, and I hope that this fall, we can start delving into some of those other opportunities because I think that there is a larger issue. There is an issue that we don't get to through rent stabilization at all, which is affordable homeownership opportunities, which is something that I think this community desperately needs and which we really don't have enough of at this point. So I think that making decisions about rent stabilization does not preclude our getting into other issues of affordable housing and broadening this. At the same time, since 1980, rent stabilization has proven to be a very effective way of maintaining the diversity in our community. We have the, we have large numbers of people who are immigrants, who are from a variety of racial and ethnic backgrounds, from a variety of income levels, and they are able to stay in our community because of rent stabilization. There may be other ways of doing it, but in the entire time I've been working on this, I haven't seen a superior way of doing it. If somebody thinks they have a way, not just a theoretical, oh, we could do something like this maybe, but if somebody has a program that they think would be better, I'd be interested in looking at it. But in the 16 years, I really haven't come across a real program, a real, you know, down-to-earth, this is how you could do it minute-by-minute type program that would be feasible. So I think this particular piece of legislation, we have worked on it for a long time, we have made changes in the program that are beneficial to property owners, we've made changes that are beneficial to tenants, and I think it is a fair piece of legislation. The kinds of things that we have been dealing with today, which are increasing the ratio that would be used as the standard for net operating income petitions, is going to benefit property owners. Also exempting homeowner-occupied two-unit buildings is also going to benefit property owners. So I want people to know that we have been listening to you. We may not agree with you on everything, but we have been listening, and we have tried to be as fair as we can. I think that there's, as I said before, I think the fact that property owners are more willing to come and speak for themselves than tenants are doesn't speak to tenants' lack of concern or satisfaction with this issue. I think it speaks to their, less of a feeling of having any control in this situation. And I think for that reason, I think we have to speak for them also. So I think this is a fair law. I think it's a, it takes the current rent stabilization ordinance, and it makes it fair to all parties. It makes it simpler. It makes it more rational, and I think it will stand for quite a long time. So I'm very pleased with what we have accomplished, and I encourage my colleagues to support this as it stands.
Mayor, I'd just like to add to that by saying that it strikes me as disingenuous to ask who pays for rent control, rent stabilization in Tacoma Park, and then when it's pointed out that we all do, everybody who pays property taxes does, and then to respond by saying, well, then the taxpayers are dupes because when they find out that they're really supporting affordable housing in the community, they'll somehow take their revenge at the polls. I don't buy that. Second, I think we've worked hard to try to find common ground with the landlords, and we're still continuing to find common ground right up to this moment. We have said, and will continue to work for this, to look at the energy costs that you have to pay and the increases in those. I think we're all committed to looking at a reasonable formula in next year to try to give you some additional relief. There are ways besides our current law that we need to continue to look at. I mentioned last week to Dr. Barr that others in the country are looking at income tax breaks, additional income tax breaks for landowners and landlords to try to stimulate additional building of units and to assist them in that regard. He brought up the idea of density as a way to look at land management practices, and I think we'll continue to look to those in the future.
Wait, but Terry, you have to make it.
No, go ahead now.
Thank you, Terry. I support this bill. It's not a perfect piece of legislation. There are many things that I would change. However, I think that the time has come to move ahead with it. There are a lot of things in this piece of legislation that will improve the current law. There are still some things we need to work on. I'm sure we will continue to do so. Rent control has been an issue as long as I've lived in Tacoma Park since the early eighties. So I am in favor of moving ahead with this now. I don't think delaying it accomplishes very much. Even if we delayed it a week, I think that would jeopardize the date when this thing can go into effect. So I agree with the mayor, and I suggest we move on ahead with it.
All I wanted to point out is that whether I vote for or against the amendment or the law tonight, it has no effect on my House's exemption status. Okay? And that's why I will vote on it and not recuse myself is because the vote does not affect my House.
You're correct. You're exempt under the old law, and you'd be exempt under the new one also.
Right.
All right. Any other comments? This is the first reading on the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. So the ordinance passes with one abstention, and it will be up for second reading next week. Before we leave, we have a couple of other items. One is the consent agenda items. The consent agenda isn't debatable unless people want to move things off the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda: making appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission, making appointments to the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, and a resolution of making appointments to the Safe Roadways Committee. And I would note that the council has at the desk a amendment to, I'm sorry, a substitution resolution for the Safe Roadways Committee resolution that was in your packet. So in voting, you should consider yourself to be voting on the substitution resolution for the Safe Roadways Committee. So would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And finally, we have a very brief work session briefing this evening. The city clerk wants to bring up some issues about the 2007 city elections and ask for the council's direction on a couple of things. Jesse?
Right. And I can be very brief with this. As you know, the election will be November 6th this year. We have a new Board of Elections, and they've met one time, and will be meeting again on July 31st. This, it's coming upon us quickly, and we need to do some planning over the council's recess. So I wanted to get a sense of your thoughts about the location of the polling place, first of all. I, it's my strong recommendation that we continue to hold the election here in this building because this is yet another transitional year. We have a new Board of Elections, we have IRB, we have a number of other things. And although when we had the special election in Ward 5, I think there was a value to that, but, and perhaps at some point in the future, it may be desirable to hold multiple, to have multiple polling places, but I want to suggest that this isn't the year for that, and I was hoping that the council would basically concur with that so that we can plan for the election. So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is that the paper ballots that have been used in the past two elections have been very popular, and I believe they've worked well, and we don't have any recommendation to change that, but there is a concern with the count, and we'd like to look into alternatives to the hand-counting ballots. And there are a number of alternatives, although our options may be limited, but we'd like to go forward with looking at the alternatives. And we've set up as a first step for that, a demonstration count for the next Board of Elections meeting, which is July 31st. So I just wanted to get your sense of, get a sense of how you felt about this.
Terry, any other?
Well, I thank you, and I admire you for the work that you put into this, and it's a challenging project. I am a little disappointed that we won't be able to have more polling places around the city, and I hope that the recommendation will be in our next city election that we will be able to hold it because I think that's going to be key to increasing voter turnout in the city. But I will defer to the Board for, and concur with whatever recommendation which you're bringing tonight. As far as the counting, certainly, you know, I saw the demonstration during the special election we had for the Ward 5 seat last year or this year. And the demonstration went very nicely. There were some problems, but it, I would encourage the Board not to finalize the format of the paper ballot until the vendor is selected for an automated system, since that was one of the issues that came up during that test that we had when Mr. Snapper was elected.
Thank you, Terry. Again, as often is the case, made the points that I was interested in making. One additional thing I would like to say, I also really appreciated, and people in my ward really appreciated, having the polling place nearby so folks could walk to the polling place. A lot of people took that opportunity just to walk there, and it was nice to see them. It was a terribly cold day, and I was impressed that folks braved that cold and came out and voted. I thought the city folks did a terrific job in managing that from start to finish. I was very impressed with the whole process. I enjoyed the drama of the hand-counting, but I do appreciate that since there were only like 204, 205 ballots, hand-counting was in fact plausible and didn't take all -- ballots, hand-counting was in fact plausible and didn't take all night. If we had thousands, as I hope we would in a future election, some faster way of counting should be looked into. And I'm planning on attending the demonstration to see if that's a good way. I do approve of the idea of paper ballots, however. Want to be sure and say that. Second, I agree with Terry that we might want to look in to how the thing is formatted, because that is a big concern. A slight difference in formatting can make a big difference in how well they're counted. Thank you.
Yes. In the best of all possible worlds, if we could somehow operationalize the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center where the national elections are held every year and -- or every four years, and often to fairly large crowds, it would certainly facilitate, I think, the participation of people on that side of town, particularly in the towers, and also those hard by New Hampshire Avenue. I think we would get a larger turnout if we had even a modest operation there of a couple of machines or whatever. It is a schlep for people to go over to the recreation center, especially given that many of those people do not have cars. And just to be able to go downstairs in the elevator and be able to vote would be, you know, a great opportunity for them.
What about mail ballots?
Maybe we should say one thing at a time.
I know.
Please.
Let me just say that I'm supportive of staff's recommendations for how we go forward at this point. I hear the concerns about having polling places closer at hand for people to be able to have an easier chance to vote. I also feel like it's not that big a city, and one central polling place also has the additional advantage of bringing everybody together on something like this. It's a chance for people from various sections of the city to reacquaint themselves with people and candidates from other areas of the city. It's a chance for everybody to have that common experience. And I thought that was particularly the case in the last regular election that the city held in the now Computer Learning Center, where there was a real chance to see people. There was essentially kind of one entrance because of the restrictions at that point in time, where there had always been kind of front entrance and back entrance to one building for voting. And you could miss a whole lot of people who used other entrances. With that system, it brought everybody into that one common area and dispersed from there for the voting, and I thought that had a lot of value.
I just want to agree with my colleagues. I think that the city clerk has done an excellent job of running past city elections. We've sort of given her a curveball almost every time with something very much different, and she's handled it very well. The elections are running excellently, even though we seem to do it a little bit differently by our decision every time. And I want to go along with the suggestion that we go with her recommendation. She's also done a very good job of pulling together an excellent board of elections, and I'm very happy with their recommendations and her recommendations also.
Mayor Porter, you know, it's our colleagues from the other side of town that have raised the question about other polling places and expressed at least an interest in maybe looking at it. Is there -- I asked the city clerk if there's any -- anything that the council could provide to the board that would make that more feasible to have polling places on the other side?
I think in two years, it'll be very feasible, but I think it is not a good idea this year. Because the board is new, because this is our full IRV, potentially IRV election, I feel that it's important for the judges to be all in one place and for it to be as streamlined as it possibly can be. I think with the board of elections in two years and at the next election, we'll be well positioned because we'll have board members who can be at various polling places.
Experienced.
Experienced, familiar with our elections, and I think there's a real potential there.
And we have some experience with the IRV.
Yes, exactly.
We've thrown the city clerk a curve for every single election.
We'll have something new for the --
The IRV for this coming one, the paper ballots for the one before that, you know, and the new internal organization of the building the last time. So maybe we can, once we've stopped, you know, doing something new at every election, maybe the city clerk can move on to things like different polling places.
I wonder if maybe the city manager could consider how we could provide bus service from the other side of town to the polling place?
We have our nice little bus now. We could probably do that.
If I can, I'd mention two other things. The board is very interested in doing voter registration. We're going to arrange for the county elections representative to do a voter registration training for the board members here at the city building. And it's something we'd likely open up to other people who are interested in doing that. And we're going to have a table at the folks' office to register voters. And so what is the last thing? Oh, one other proposal that we may bring to you in the fall is to go to a no-fault absentee ballot, as the state did, because right now, our absentee ballots, there's actually a requirement that you --
Have a reason for not being --
Have a reason for not coming to the polls. So we think it would be good to go to the state system, where you can just do it on request. And so that's something that we'll probably be recommending in the fall.
I would appreciate --
That gets to a mail -- that's almost a mail-in ballot. We don't say that, but that's almost a mail-in ballot process.
I would appreciate you letting me know when the -- when you have the class scheduled. I have eight volunteers who have signed up to do that. I've been waiting to see if I can get some more before I call the county to schedule something. But if you're bringing it here, that would be great, and I think I can get some more volunteers to do voter registration.
That's great.
But I would like to do that in the near term, because that takes some time.
It would most likely be, it'll be in August, which is --
Right.
But I'm thinking it'll probably be mid-August, something like that.
Okay. Sooner you can give me the date, the better. Thank you.
And I think we should also, and it's more difficult to do, to also focus on the non-U.S. citizens who are eligible to vote in our city elections. And I know that you've probably got a number of them in your ward. Is there anything else? Nothing else. Word turned.